Will the clerk please call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Amy Keith.
Here.
Ash.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Well, welcome. What a few couple of days we've had. It's great to have folks back. I want to thank everybody for the time that you've spent with us this week. We're going to start with pretty much a presentation slash answering of questions time with Planning and Development Services Director Tim Keen and the rest of the team. And we've got staff here from some different departments based on some of the discussion that was had this week. So I'm just going to kick it over to Tim and then my, my plan is after Tim and staff walk through the discussion items we've had, the recommendations that they're bringing to us in response to some of those discussions we've had, then we'll open it up for discussion unless something ends up coming up in between Tim and council discussion. So Tim, please, welcome back.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Tim Keen, Director of Planning and Development Services for the city of Boise. I'm going to start with a few remarks and we've got some of our colleagues from other city departments here to address some issues that have come up repeatedly during the week. Appreciate their attendance. I want to just start by saying from the perspective of a staff team that's been working on this public endeavor for several years, this week has been quite reflective of the entire process. Boise residents have actually really been concentrating on this topic for many months and actually several years. It's really a remarkable accomplishment. So I think that's an important first thing for me to say is the discussion we've heard this week is one that was much like public meetings that we had last year and the year before. And the commitment of so many people in this city to getting this right has been remarkable. It really has. So, and this week has been certainly reflective of that. We're greatly appreciative of the ideas and the passion that everyone has brought to these hearings this week, so many residents of the city. And once again, I want to start by acknowledging the long-term commitment to this public process from Jessica Zilag, Deanna Dupuy, Andrea Tuning, Lena Walker, Lindsay Moser, and really many other people in the Department of Planning and Development Services, an example, Crystal Rain, who really guided this through the Planning and Zoning Commission process. As I said on Monday, I think Boise should really be proud of what the community has created in these new rules for development. Clearly, the proposed code is not the solution to every problem that we have in the city. As many have said this week, clearly isn't. It is not the only solution. The proposed code is also not a random collection of planning ideas and theories about smart growth or anything else. It is not a single headline response to how we should grow and how we should address the issues of housing affordability. Rather, it is a proposal customized to the specific physical characteristics of this particular place. And it's a collection of big things and small things, big ways and small ways to address the most pressing challenges of this growing city, particularly as it relates to housing affordability, transportation, addressing gross impact on a changing climate, and ensuring we grow in a way that is within our means to pay for the services that we need affordably. The zoning ordinance, as I said, is not, is not everything, but it is an important representation of what we care about and what we want of our future city. We have said since Blueprint Boise, we want a variety of homes so people of all means can live here. We want more and more people in the city to have a choice as to how they get about the city. Whether it's to school or job or services, people need to have choices as to how they get around. And we have said that we can't let growth spoil the wild places around us. Those values are throughout the proposed ordinance, not in one idea or place, but everywhere. We have said Boise can't sprawl into the desert farmland and hills around us for many reasons. But one of them is we simply can't afford that. All of this means we must become experts in we must become experts in growing within the existing neighborhoods and business districts of the city and experts in growing on our existing streets in ways that make our streets and neighborhoods more pleasing, vibrant and diverse. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to, through this and many other actions as a city, to ensure our city gets better and better with more people. So that's my introduction. Just to reflect on this week, we've been making diligent notes as council has throughout the week. So I have some specific items to go through that have been much a part of the discussion this week and some recommendations to make to council. But a few, as I said when I started, a few of these issues are best addressed by some of our colleagues and other city departments. So we, we wanted to start before I get into some of the nitty gritty that we've been discussing this week and our recommendations around some adjustments to the ordinance. I did want to invite a few other city staff to join us and address some issues I know you care a lot about and we've all made notes about this week. The first is Rebecca Hub, who of course is a general manager of the airport. There was some discussion about airport influence areas this week and the zoning ordinances reflect the zoning ordinance requirements around development in the vicinity of the airport. So Rebecca, if you could come up and address council on this, thank you.
Thank you, Director Keen. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to talk to you today. I understand there were some questions the other night about what is the appropriate measure to use in the new zoning code update and rewrite, whether it would be the noise exposure models or whether or not it would be the airport influence area. And so I wanted to provide some information about the differences between those two measures. So first, and I think perhaps most importantly, one of the things that the zoning code rewrite has set out to do is maintain the things that are working well within the existing zoning code and the Boise Airport Influence Area is part of the Blueprint Boise. And so by incorporating that into the zoning code rewrite, I think it provides the continuity. The, the noise exposure models were part of our Federal Aviation Regulation Part 150 study, which is a study that the airport does just to measure noise. The FAA approves the noise exposure model design and the layout, but it doesn't actually provide any guidance. It's just a sample of what is and what is projected. Whereas the airport influence area went through a very public hearing process back when it was created. And I would note that it was adopted by Boise City Council at the time and also by Ada County. Ada County never actually adopts the noise exposure model. So those are, I think, a couple of distinct differences between the two. The Part 150 study, we did have public hearings as part of that. And I would note that we had over 110 Ds, all of whom were opposed to airport noise and any increase in airplane noise. We had over 50 comments in the federal register. And then when Boise was being considered for the F-35, we had public hearings with over 100 attendees at those as well. So I think that speaks to concern that residents have about noise and aircraft noise and the potential impact of aircraft noise. I would also note that the Part 150 study is based on today's standard, which is 65 decibels, average decibels of the day-night noise level. And that is always subject to change. Right now FAA is considering changing the standard to 50 decibels. And in their most recent noise and environmental, excuse me, neighborhood environmental study that was done last year, it showed that the level of noise that residents were experiencing or categorizing as extremely annoying related to aircraft noises increased substantially since the studies were first done related to DNL back in the early seventies. So while noise perhaps levels have decreased, people are actually more sensitive to it today than they were previously. And that is why we're recommending that the city of Boise, as we look at future zoning around the airport, that we take the most conservative approach possible, recognizing that noise is often an emotional response to, or people's response to noise rather, is often emotional, not necessarily based on data. Two people can hear the same noise and be impacted by it differently. And so we always want to take the most conservative approach. And what we're trying to do is protect the Boise Airport so that way we don't have encroachment and development that's not compatible around the airport that would force us to at a future point in time, consider relocating the airport that we've seen happen in other communities. So I hope that helps to clarify. I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor. Rebecca, I gather that if there's a Blueprint Boise Airport Influence Area, the FAA Part 150 study, public hearings, and then federal approval, to the extent that we even wanted to begin to mess with this, it would probably be a different process than this one. Is that right?
It would be a different process, I think, to amend the Airport Influence Area. Again, that went through a very comprehensive public process when it was adopted. And so to change that now would be, you know, changing it after the fact without actual appropriate input review and study.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Rebecca, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming and explaining this to us. What was, how long ago was that for these studies? I mean, was that Blueprint Boise time? Can you give us a timeline?
I want to say that study was done probably in about 2017.
Okay.
And again, that study is something that we do as a voluntary measure to assess our impact on the community. It's not anything that is required by federal regulation. It was our attempt to go above and beyond to be a good neighbor, to assess what the impact of future changes, particularly to the guard mission, because at that point in time, we were looking at the potential retirement of the A-10 and a new follow-on mission. So we wanted to better understand how a change in mission could impact the noise footprint of the Boise Airport. And that was what precipitated that. So it's not required by regulation. Typically, you would do it if your situation has changed every five to 10 years. But our situation hasn't really changed since, since that last study was done.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, next, this may be Rebecca's phone. Next, we're going to speak to, you've had several issues come up related water in the city. Of course, the assured water supply, which is part of the ordinance that we're proposing to you tonight, but also questions about aquifer and Southwest Boise and issues around wells and then even issues about infiltration. So we've got Steve Hubbell here with us tonight from Public Works to address you on these things.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. It's nice to be here with you this afternoon. Lots of discussion the last couple of days about assured water supply in addition to other items. So just thought it would be good to take a couple of minutes to go over that portion of the requirement in detail. And so starting with some background, you know, the ordinance language around assured water supply is complex, but the intent is very simple. It's really to ensure that our community and residents have long-term access to water in the future as we develop. And like many of our other environmental initiatives, with water supply, we're attempting to proactively address the issue with the intent that our community is more resilient to future drought and climate change. We heard frequently from our residents in the initial parts of the zoning, the modern zoning ordinance development, that this was an issue that was particularly important to them. Water supply issues are becoming more common in other states, in other Western states, excuse me. And we hope that planning now can ensure that we avoid or minimize some of those issues. The physical availability of water for the foreseeable future to support development should be an aspect upon which our community and the city and its land use decisions can rely. To ensure inadequate and reliable long-term water supply, the revised zoning ordinance takes guidance from assured water supply requirements in other Western states. It applies to all new development and redevelopment projects. These provisions will have a later effective date than the zoning ordinance itself. And the city will develop implementation guidance to work with applicants and stakeholders on how to comply. And prior to that guidance being finalized, we'd come back to council for your consideration of that. We've had some questions during the process about local authority. So I wanted to reference the Local Land Use and Planning Act, or LUPA. LUPA gives the city authority to review the adequacy of public services and facilities to support development, including water supply. Embedding the consideration of water supply into the land use decision-making process is similar to what the city does for other public services like transportation, fire, sewer, and related items. We also wanted to address the complexities of water regulation and to confirm that the proposed assured water supply requirements do not conflict with the requirements of other state agencies, including the Idaho Department of Water Resources, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and the Idaho Public Utilities Commission. We received feedback on the first version of the ordinance from the Department of Water Resources and made substantive changes to further refine and clarify the role of the city's land use regulation with respect to water supply and to specifically acknowledge the roles of other state agencies within the code language. These changes are reflected in the supplemental memo from early June that Director Keen referenced on Monday. Department of Water Resources reviewed these revisions and submitted an updated letter to thank us for our revisions and share that the majority of their comments were addressed. I'll be glad to answer any questions. And also my colleague, Mary Grant, reflecting a team approach to this work, is here from Legal as well.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate the additional context. From a process standpoint, when, and when we have an applicant who comes in and they're proposing a development, is this almost just like another agency letter, like one we would expect from ACHD? What is that going to look like just from the applicant's standpoint?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, thank you for the question. I see the process going forward as two paths, depending on the circumstance of the development. If a development proposes to use a public drinking water provider, for example, Veolia is certainly the ones that many of us are familiar with. What we anticipate is if these requirements are enacted, that essentially Veolia would prepare in advance a master analysis to address assured water supply for their entire service area. The city would review that and assuming it was approved, at the time of a specific development application coming forward, that developer would collaborate with Veolia to ensure that their development is included and acceptable. And that then that documentation would be provided to the developer and subsequent to the city. And from what I understand, that's the current process for approving fire flows, I believe, or fire protection with a public water or with a utility water supply. Then the second scenario would be what I would describe as an individual applicant. And that would be someone who's proposing to use groundwater or a private water system. And essentially that developer on a case-by-case basis would be required to prepare an assured water supply analysis specific to that project, subject to review by the city.
Madam Mayor, a follow-up to that. So one of the concerns that we heard was, I already have an existing well. What if somebody comes and proposes a development that has a new well and then that new well draws down the water table where I live? Does this kind of help to address that in any way?
So, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, a great question. I think it's fair to emphasize that the focus of the assured, the assured water supply is on new development and redevelopment. So if a new project is proposed that uses a well or groundwater, they'll need to confirm assured water as I described. And that should help mitigate any issues around that new well or groundwater development going forward. The assured water supply requirements do not directly apply to existing wells as existing wells and their associated water rights are regulated by the Department of Water Resources. However, we do think there will be some benefit from some of the assured water supply work because it will start to let us build the information that we know about groundwater throughout the city and may provide some additional documentation or information to help troubleshoot issues we might see with existing wells down the road.
Great.
Let me pause. I certainly have, can add to that, but let me pause there.
I think, I think that gets to it.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And Mayor. Excuse me. A couple of questions. I'm not sure if I've seen the second letter from the Idaho Department of Water Resources, but I saw an initial letter for them, I think it was in April, and then another one from another agency. And this is going to be an extremely oversimplification of what I read. But one of the themes that I saw was, we're doing this already. This stuff is already taken care of. Why do we need an additional step to do it? So I'm wondering if you could, I think you've kind of answered that a little bit already, but I'm wondering if you could expand on that a little bit further.
Mayor McLean, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I think I'm going to ask Mary to address that part because she was intimately involved in working through the revisions to the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, Councilpro tem Hallie Burton, you are correct. We did receive those two letters ahead of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings. In the interim, we had meetings with stakeholder Veolia and also a meeting with Idaho Department of Water Resources. And to characterize, I think one of them was that we're doing this already, kind of an aspect. And with the Idaho Department of Water Resources, there were some concerns about redundancy and maybe not reflecting it in code language, really the lane that the state agencies have versus what the city has. So as follow-up to that meeting with Idaho Department of Water Resources, we did provide the revisions to, that council has before them this week. And the second letter from Idaho Department of Water Resources really came back and said their concerns were largely addressed. A lot of it had to do with overlap with respect to infrastructure capacity and delivery with financial capability, with sort of the present current, when, when a water right is obtained, whether or not that water is physically present at that moment in time. However, in our conversations with the state agencies, it became very clear that there really is a gap in there's no state agency addressing that reliability and continuity aspect of what does that, what do those water rights show with that capacity for delivery under sustained use over time and looking into the future? So with these revisions that you have, it was really tailored to address that very narrow question and to make sure that the avenues of the state agencies were very well respected and acknowledged within those revisions.
Awesome. Thank you. I don't know if anyone has any follow-ups to that particular question. I've got a separate one. So so the separate one is related to Council President Woodings' question. I think some of those people who brought up those same issues also brought up possibilities of requiring groundwater recharge, which wasn't really something that I've thought could ever be a requirement to do. And so I just wanted to make sure that since a couple of people brought that up, that I relayed it over to you to see if there was any response or thoughts or conversations that have had around this area.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hallie Burton, as I paused at the end of Councilmember Woodings' question, that was a bit of the next part. So I think first on that issue, it's worth mentioning that there are requirements proposed in the modern zoning ordinance that do begin to address some of those issues and water conservation generally. There's a couple I want to point out. One is requirements for drought tolerant landscaping in the landscaping section. The second is the requirement for soil amendments to increase soil moisture and retention. And then the third is a requirement to maintain irrigation from surface water where that's currently present. I think the three of those do, at least within the modern zoning ordinance, do speak to some of those concerns. And then also I thought it was worth mentioning that the city's stormwater management program, a separate ordinance, but certainly related to land development, has focused intently on infiltration since it was enacted in the early nineties. So infiltrating runoff from development precipitation. And then finally, more recently, the recycled water program potentially will focus on aquifer replenishment long-term. I am not suggesting that that's a panacea there, but there certainly are some aspects to address that.
And just a final follow-up there. Do you have a, I think I know what it means. Do you have a way of explaining to me in a few sentences what soil amendment means?
I do. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, perhaps just a word, compost. So essentially what we're thinking is as, as a site's developed and prepared, the requirement would be to come in, till the soil, add compost, ensure it's got good health, and that's going to have benefits for retention as well as other benefits ultimately to that site.
Madam Mayor, thank you. This is really helpful. Sounds like there's been a lot of communication with state agencies, making sure that we're cooperating. What has been the feedback from Veolia and did they have any subsequent comments? Like to hear their perspective on this.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I have here a copy of Veolia's comments from April 20th to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those are the only written comments that I'm aware of. I don't believe there are subsequent ones. In the springtime, we did engage discussions with them. We reached out in March with some details about the assured water supply that subsequently led to an in-person meeting with their team in April. And as I described with the revisions based on commentary from the Department of Water Resources, certainly there was some feedback that Veolia provided that where possible was incorporated into the revision that's presented in the June memo.
Great. So we don't have any additional comments from the June 1st memo?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, we also had quite a bit of discussion this week related to various aspects of the tree canopy in Boise and effort within this ordinance to ensure that we continue to have that, that the tree canopy continues to be part of what so characterizes the city. A few specific things that relate to the regulation. So we did ask, and Sarah Arkell has joined us from Parks and Recreation to speak through a few issues related to tree canopy and tree planting.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having me. Sarah Arkell, Superintendent of Parks Resources. You may wonder why you're not seeing our city forester today. He is out on maternity leave, paternity leave, excuse me. So I will be doing my best in his place and I brought Trevor Kessner, our parks planner with me to address any questions should they arise following this presentation. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for caring about trees through the City of Trees Initiative and through this modern zoning code rewrite. We were pleased to see many aspects of enhancement and protection of parks assets and also enhancement and protections of trees incorporated within the, within the discussion, excuse me. So just for a moment, I thought I'd take a minute to level set what these classes are. Not everyone knows what a class one, class two, class three tree is, and it's helpful to have a visual. So a class one tree is really small for tight spaces utilized around planting areas where there isn't a lot of room for canopy. Class two is a medium-sized tree. You might see those in the right-of-way often. And class three trees are those bigger, more mature, larger canopy trees where we get the most ecosystem benefits out of both the canopy, the shading, the, they use less water. And this is where, you know, the work that we're doing with regard to tree canopy enhancement and protection, the work that you're doing with tree canopy enhancement and protection really dovetails with a lot of our climate-related goals. So I'm happy to try and address what I understand was discussed through public comment and questions from council regarding some of these issues. So we, we use these classes to help us calculate what's appropriate where from a tree perspective. So a class three tree is very large. It needs a lot of room. It needs not only room for its canopy, but also room for its roots. So in, in working with developers and other agencies, an eight-foot buffer for a class three tree, and what I mean by eight-foot buffer is on the and other agencies, an eight foot buffer for a class three tree, and what I mean by eight foot buffer is on the ground, right? Is really sufficient and we try and find those opportunities where we can. These trees, like I said, are mature. They help. They help address some of our canopy goals in areas where we have a canopy desert. And so we want to retain them and protect them wherever we can. Obviously, they're compromised. If there's a lot of concrete around, right? Their roots can get compromised. So silver cells also provide the accommodations that we need in an urban environments. We're trying always to push that opportunity for silver cells. And are you all familiar with silver cells? Perhaps not. I'll describe them. If you're thinking about a streetscape with a sidewalk and perhaps a road next to it, a silver cell is almost like a cage that allows the tree's roots to grow and expand over time without impacting the surface, hard surface around it. It's oftentimes a more costly solution, but it is the best long term solution for the health of the tree. There is an issue with trees in urban areas potentially impacting underground utilities. And so we have to be very careful about where those silver cells can be used and how they can be useful in protecting those underground utilities. The other issue that I understand has arisen in comment and question is whether or not it's appropriate or can be conceived to put larger trees in some of the areas and right of ways where Idaho Power might have utilities or ACHD might have right of way. And from the city's perspective, you know, we have tried to find those opportunities where we can place larger trees. Currently, those two agencies have requirements that limit us from citing class two and class three trees under power lines or within right of ways. So as we move forward, if that becomes something that that, you know, we want to try and push harder on, we'll have to work with those partner agencies to try and find those places where where it makes sense and it works. And oftentimes it's going to be a case by case basis. So with that, that was all I had for you today. Happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I have Trevor Kessner, our parks planner here to help if there's any questions that I can't answer.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much, Sarah. I appreciate it. And on that last point of under power lines. I actually had the opposite concern because as I was looking through the new code, it seemed to be a little bit more permissive. Like class one trees are allowed only under power lines where I was wondering if we instead of allowed should be required under power lines. So that was kind of my question on that one. And so kind of flipping that thinking, should we make the language non permissive and instead explicit that we're planting class one trees under power lines?
Madam Mayor, Council President Woodings, Madam Mayor, do you want to say something before?
Well, I was just going to say, if you if you're not comfortable answering that, planning staff might be able to as well, since Sarah's subbing for the forester.
Madam Mayor, thank you for that. I do believe I can answer it, but if I do it wrong, hopefully someone will tell me. I think that because we have different types of power lines in different areas, there may be places where class two trees would be completely appropriate. And so it would be nice to have the flexibility in order to cite those trees, like I said, on a case by case basis in a way that can help reach our canopy goals, but also not impact the utility.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, would you like someone?
No. Madam Mayor, maybe sort of in addition to there, I kind of read your slide, and this is what I interpreted as saying is we put the biggest trees we possibly can wherever we can. Unless there's another agency that doesn't allow us to do that. And so I guess, you know, my preference as a as a member on city council is to continue that effort is to make sure that we're putting the biggest trees that we possibly can wherever we can, where it makes sense. That isn't going to create issues for the road, the power lines or anything else. And then also working with these agencies, ACHD, Idaho Power to find those opportunities to go larger where we can and where it makes sense. Am I kind of interpreting that effort correctly in the code?
Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tem Hallie Burton, yes, you should have given my presentation for me. That was a much more succinct way of saying it. That's absolutely correct.
But it's not code speak. So I don't know that it would necessarily work. It's a jumbled Hallie Burton speak.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great that they all could join us tonight. So you all had a chance to ask them questions. Some of these things are very related to the technical aspects of what these other departments do. And we should make note of the fact that every department in the city was so involved in this process over multiple years. So it was a absolutely a team effort to get us to where we are tonight. So thanks to everybody that joined us and contributed tonight. I want to speak and I'll get into some topics that were so much a part of the conversation this week and actually get into a series of recommendations in a minute that relate to staff's recommendations on some edits based on the discussion this week. But I wanted to go back for a minute and talk about the process again. Mostly because there's been a lot of discussion about the process this week and understandably, there are people that come to the process late. There are those that have been involved for five years. So everybody has a different kind of perspective on the the time associated with this. So I wanted to put us all back in the place as to where we are. This is a slide I showed on Monday, which really gets to the longer process of creating this code. As I said, on Monday, the first step actually, which isn't on this slide, but it predates the fall 2020 stuff was the analysis of the existing code that was done by Clarion, which identified where the existing code has has its problems and how it was not consistent with our comprehensive plan. Once that analysis of the existing code was done, we got into this public process and earnest in the fall of 2020, that included a variety of ways in which the public could participate. It also included the creation of our citizen advisory committee that met many times to make suggestions and provide guidance in this process. And then notably, and I'll come back to this in a minute, but there was a real pivot that resulted from this public process. I mean, people's involvement affected what you have before you today in very fundamental ways. And a reminder, and you see it on this slide, we went through this process of discussing with people modules one and two. Back to the spring of 2021 and into the early into the beginning of 2022, the the first phase and the second phase where we were talking about the ordinance and not just talking about it, the modules one and two were actually distributed in an ordinance form at that time. So going back as far as the spring of 2021, we had people not just reviewing ideas, but actually reviewing the specific content of the ordinance. And there was a lot of dissatisfaction with it, which resulted in major changes I'll get to in a minute. That really were then presented and discussed both in public forums, but also in detail in ordinance form in the summer of last year. This is a kind of recounting of all that happened in terms of the public process and lots of, as I said, people come to things at different times, which is understandable because everybody's busy or has a different level of interest in this, but but it's again back to the extraordinary nature of what this community has done to come up with what's before you tonight. All these community conversations. It's actually 23 meetings that the CAC had, the surveys that were done. The stakeholder meeting, city council presentations, planning and zoning commission presentations. You know, and really what's fascinating to me about it is the depth to which residents of this city committed to this process years ago. And resulted in what we have before you today. This this ordinance that you have before you, you can clearly say with great confidence is the product of a long public process and its contents are actually fundamentally shaped by that process. That's remarkable. And then this thing about it, and I wanted to get into some specificity related to that because we talked about this Monday. There's probably people that didn't hear this, but with regard to those shifts that were made, we really in the spring of last year started to focus on what are people telling us are important about this city? One of them is back to this issue of we've got to have development where we've got the infrastructure and services to support it. We can't afford to keep spreading, expecting people in this city to pay for services and infrastructure further and further from the city. That just doesn't work. We got a direct development where we've got either existing infrastructure or planned infrastructure. That's how the mixed use districts were created. I mean, they're specifically aligned to address where we have the services and facilities to support growth. Think of the transit conversation we've had this week and how this ordinance is so designed around mobility and people's options and that comes to transit. Also, in the spring and summer of last year, we changed our whole direction and said, we've got to respect the variety of neighborhoods we have in the city. We're not going to consolidate our single family zoning districts. We're actually going to go ahead and acknowledge this diversity of neighborhoods as part of what makes the city what it is. So we kept that and said, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we can have a variety of building types in all these neighborhoods. But we're going to respect the fact that they are basically, that they're different. They're more rural or they're suburban or they're urban or they're compact. And let's let's acknowledge that and understand that that's part of what makes the city what it is. And then the strategy around affordability and sustainability, that's when that last spring, summer is when we organized a lot of these density moves and so forth to help us achieve our affordability and sustainability goals, not in one place in the ordinance, in many places. We have these affordability incentives that are part of this, and that was a product of that public process. People said, if you allow these additional ways of getting density in the neighborhoods, but there's no affordability aspect of it. How is that helpful? We're going to have more expensive housing. And I believe me, this ordinance is in so many ways about ensuring we can provide the supply we need in this city to address the demand. Clearly, that's fundamental to this ordinance. But there are ways in which we got to be careful and ensure that we're getting the affordability that goes along with some of this density, especially in neighborhoods. So we got to be careful about that. That all came from the public process. Here's those affordability incentives that again came out of the public process, spring, summer of last year. That includes the two units beyond the two that you're now allowed in the R1 districts and the fact that they have to be affordable. That includes the strategic infill on busier streets. It's got you additional units, many different types of what are called missing middle types of housing, which everybody knows because they're in old neighborhoods of the city and they were made illegal. Includes adaptive reuse provision of this ordinance, which allows you to reuse an existing structure for multiple units, which again has been a tradition in the city that made illegal in 1966. Includes the accessory dwelling unit expansion of ways that you can use to expect accessory dwelling units in the city. Not one headline. Multiple headlines, multiple ways to get to this affordability issue in the city and even in some cases tying parking reductions to affordability. So we've got even that aspect of incentive tied to affordability in these mixed use districts. So so that's the public process. And I just want to just reflect on how people's concerns about this place and great ideas about how to make this better so reflected, so resulted in what you have before you today. Another issue that's come up this week that I wanted to speak to kind of relates to issues and I and I never talked about the industrial districts in this code and how this is changing from the existing code and and how it's more protective to neighborhoods. And I wanted to transition from that into some other related issues that have to do with, you know, our, how important it is for us to protect vulnerable people in the city. So I'm going to go through a few slides that speak to these things. The first on the industrial development standards in this. In this new code, one change that we made, and this came directly out of the Blue Valley conversation that council recently had. Was that we said, you know, we should provide these protections related to industrial use to a property or an area. Whether it's used residentially or zoned residentially, because in the existing code, it says any protection that you get for adjacent industrial use only applies to residentially zoned property. If you're not residentially zoned, these protections don't afford to you. So that's what Blue Valley's issue was, is they're not residentially zoned because of the history that they're in, the industrial and all that. So so we said, let's make these protections available to anyone. And it doesn't just affect Blue Valley, but I'm saying that was a recent case before council. It would affect anybody that's in an area adjacent to industrial. These protections afford to you. But then the next part of it is we added additional protections, which include these uses you can see here that now require conditional use permit, including importantly, that we added a definition for something called large warehouse, which currently isn't defined in the ordinance, because this is the exact problem that we were having in the Blue Valley case is large warehouses. There's no review of them necessarily. So we added this provision that when it comes to that larger warehouse, let's add a definition and then require a conditional use permit for those. So these are additional protections that we added to the to the industrial districts here. So this has to do with these different uses, including what has come up this week, issues about, you know, the most places that no one wants to just have by right anywhere adding these conditional use requirements around uses that we have to be incredibly concerned and careful about as it relates to their location in the city, that those have to go through a legislative process. Then the other thing was then we increased the buffers and protect setbacks and protections for those in those cases. So in any case. So you can see on the left what the existing code does in terms of setbacks. And you can see in the new modern zoning code, what our setbacks are and those kinds of things. So we we added these additional buffer requirements as you go up and setbacks. Again, the fact of the matter is through a legislative process and all the discussion you had last year about better protecting Blue Valley. We ended up giving them a hundred foot setback. That's what's incorporated into the new code. In any case, you don't have to come to council and request that you're getting it. So wanted to mention these industrial, which I hadn't mentioned before. So then the other thing relates to this language. It's been much discussed this week in the the conditional use language, and we specifically added some changes to the conditional use. And and there's reasons for doing that. And 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 we think it's the right thing to do to, because the existing ordinance just speaks to the fact that we've got to address any negative impact on an area and all that kind of stuff and mitigate it to the max maximum extent practicable to the maximum extent we can. And then we added this or for or there's public benefits for the post use that outweighs. And there's a concern about this. I'll tell you that that the this has most been discussed, of course, in the recent deliberations this community had around the shelter that's on State Street. And part of the reason we added specificity here was from learning from those processes, you know, that we really have to get more specific about these things or be clear about what this process should result in. And we think the public benefits aspect of it is important because we want to raise the public discussion about any individual site to go beyond perceptions of things like traffic or parking in a small vicinity to talk about what are the larger benefits of anything. But we recognize the concerns that have been raised about the 1970s and so forth, when there was especially big concerns around environmental justice and so forth. So a suggestion that we're making is that we change that language to change or to and. So that in any case, when you're deliberating over a conditional use permit, you're looking at both of these things. It's not one or the other. It's both. So that's the suggestion. The last thing I'll mention in this realm relates to an important issue, which kind of got became part of the discussion related to conditional use languages that relates to findings. And that has to do with this addition that we're proposing in this ordinance that is specifically to address our concerns around new development displacing existing vulnerable populations. This protection does not exist in the current ordinance. And what it says is that, as you can see here, if now or within the last three years, you've got a site that had manufactured home community, assisted living, retirement, nursing home, deed restricted affordable housing through some program or even naturally occurring affordable housing at 60% of AMI. That we would require a conditional use permit in those cases in any of these zones. When we had put out the original draft of the ordinance. We included this as a protection and as a conditional use permit in the MX three, the MX five and the MX four. And what we're suggesting now is that we extend that to the other MX zones and also to the R2 and the R3. So we're suggesting we widen that protection for those vulnerable communities. So and that is a separate issue, obviously, than the discussion around the conditional use findings. But I just wanted to note that because it became kind of entangled in that discussion at times. But I just wanted to note that because it became kind of entangled in that discussion at times this week. So I'm going to transition to other things, happy to answer questions about those things.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Tim, can you talk to us a little bit how we calculate the naturally occurring affordable housing at 60 AMI? What is the data source for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, the, the, you mean the AMI part of it? So the annually, the AMI numbers are updated by HUD. And so we, we have a regular, ongoing adjusting number for AMI in the city and in the region. And, and it breaks it down by different income levels. So you go 60% is one of them, 80, 100, 120%. So, and it's also by family size. So if you're a one person household or a four person household, so it gives us that whole metric, metrics around these things. And actually, the, all of those details are available all the time on the city's website.
Have a follow up, Mayor. So I think I want to pinpoint it a little bit more. So the information comes from HUD. Is that based on what the, the home would sell for? And what, whether the, somebody with 60% of AMI could afford that, like tie those two together?
Absolutely. Councilmember Willetts, that has to do with the, that the, that the unit is affordable for someone at that income level. That is what that means.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Tim, I had a quick question about your previous slide, if that's okay. And it's the word practicable, because I don't, maybe I just don't understand it, right? If material negative impacts will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable, and practicable means doable. That to me implies that the worse the proposed use is, the more likely it's to be approved. And like, here's why, a cement plant or a shooting range has impacts that just are not practicable to remedy. And so because, you know, you remedy them to the maximum extent practicable, practicable and the use is still atrocious, that tips towards approving the conditional use permit, and that doesn't connect in my mind.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Bejat, I might ask James Smith to join us for this, just because they've been so inter instrumental in drafting this language specifically. James, if you could speak to that?
Mayor and council members, my name is James Smith. I'm a deputy city attorney. I, I think it's an important question, what practicable means. I think looking ahead, it's, it's best for the council to consider what you'd like the planning and zoning commission to, to do with these kinds of applications and what, how you expect the standard to work. The intent of using language like that is actually to raise the bar, that unless someone can show the commission that, that a condition or requirement would be unreasonable and, and unjust according to the proposed use, that it, that it's fair and that it can be imposed. And so the idea is mitigation means minimize, not like eliminate. So we're moving in the direction away from, or that's what's proposed, is to get away from the current language, which can be tempting to read as an all or nothing kind of thing. In the sense of if there's any adverse impact, anything measurable, that it must be denied. That's, it's tempting to read it that way, but as I think it's been pointed out, that's, that's not quite consistent with state law, which talks about minimizing impacts, not eliminating them. So that's one reason for the shift. But the intent of some of this language is actually to, to pile on more meaning and something to chew on where folks are expected to, to do everything that they can. And, and that only if those findings are made, that it could be approved, getting into the, the public benefit piece. But practicable, of course, the shooting range example is if, if, if through your code, you've decided what uses can be allowed in a certain zone with conditions, the idea is that it's been thought through. And so I think that just takes the analysis one step back. If you don't think that a use is appropriate in a certain zone, that it, that it's not the type that you could really safely condition at all, then you should take it out of that allowed use table and not allow it to be conditionally approved there.
That's helpful. So part of the answer is this conversation about what is, what can be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable happens inside the shell of an already decided conversation about what allowed uses are even going to be able to enter the conditional use permit process in the first place. And so if we have a concern about a shooting range or a cement plant, et cetera, the place to mitigate those is by, is on the allowed uses table in the first place, before you even get to this conversation.
Councilmember, that's a great way to put it. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, actually, that clarification, because if now you believe that there's a use that could never be mitigated, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an allowed use within that, within an area or near a residential area or what have you. Because we're otherwise setting up future councils and the community for that discussion of is it really enough mitigation? Is it not? Is there an adverse impact? Is there not? Like, that now's the time to look at those use tables and, and say, actually, it's, it's unlikely that we could imagine mitigation to the maximum extent practicable. So then that you shouldn't be in that, in that table.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that's a, a great point that I want to follow up on. I'm a, I'm a little concerned that this still doesn't get us where we need to be and that it could still be vague. I'm wondering if you could pull the state statue and help us look at that. That was mentioned in testimony, and that might help give us some context, if that's possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can get that up on the screen.
Yeah, thank you. So it'll be after dinner.
Madam Mayor. One more comment, a couple of slides back on the industrial use. I just want to give some credit to staff on this one. We had a meeting that was really, really hard related to Blue Valley, trying to figure out what to do there. Council basically gave instructions to say, like, let's have a meeting with planning department and figure out what we can do to make sure there's additional protections at this particular area, this particular area of Blue Valley. And staff basically came back and said, like, yes, we can do something here, but why wouldn't we do this everywhere? That the same situation might happen in the future and, which was like, it's like, yeah, I probably should have that, thought of that. But it was really nice to know that you were looking at it at such a much larger scale of like, yes, we need to solve this particular problem, but we need to make sure that this problem never happens again. And it was really above and beyond staff, I think, to come with that solution. And I just want to make sure that everyone that was involved with that process and that recommendation is recognized, because I think it's a really, really big deal. And it's the kind of stuff I think that we love to see on council with staff doing as far as coming up with these much larger, larger solutions. So I just want to thank you, Tim, and your team for that one.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor, I just want to echo that. That was actually one of the questions I had today because it's listed in the executive summary, but we didn't hear any testimony on that. And I know that the Blue Valley discussion was really gut wrenching for all of us because of what the criteria was within the current zoning code. So thank you for looking at that. I wanted to go back to this. Oh, look, right on, on this AMI. So how would we know about, I understand about rent, but how would we know about someone's mortgage? Because one of the things that came up yesterday was, you know, that beautiful video of someone's home, you know, someone's neighborhood, and if whether someone wanted to redevelop that and put more density in there. Tell us how that would work if there was homes existing there.
Right. Well, I mean, it would, this would apply to any condition, whether it's an owner occupied condition or rental condition. We would evaluate what the existing use is or what it's been in the last three years. The reason for adding the three year thing is so that we're not encouraging people to buy property and then, and then remove existing tenants or people that are there and then come forward, you know, for the conditional use permit or then seek a permit to build. So that's the reason for the three year window there is so that we're not encouraging that. So, but then when they come forward to us and we, we assign this conditional use requirement to them, we would be evaluating what's the existing use on the property within the last three years, whether it's a, someone that owned the property and was lower income or, or it's a rental.
So will we look at what the house currently would go for within within the jurisdiction of the AMI?
Can I, can I jump in here just for a second? Another question first. For this, this is CUP related. What, and would a CUP for multifamily development be used on a single family home lot?
Well, I'm, I'm imagining a case where someone could have consolidated multiple lots.
This, this is the key piece, right? So it's not just one individual mortgage, but it, that great. Okay. If you'll just go into some of that too, because I think that's the, that's the larger piece of the puzzle is it's not that, you know, I've been in my house and I've aged in place and now I'm selling it because somebody buying my land would, on one lot, wouldn't do a CUP. But it would be somebody that's actually trying to amass quite a few of my neighbors as well, correct?
That's right. And we've heard some of that this week. Councilmember Willetts. So, so if somebody's seeking to consolidate a number of single family lots to bring forward a larger redevelopment of them, that's why this is so helpful, is it gives us the authority and the right through a public process to evaluate what's gone on to get this development proposal before you.
That's helpful. Thank you. That was the question.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move then into other topics this week and, and go through a series of staff recommendations based on the discussion that we've had publicly here. And Mayor, you just let me know how, how quickly or what you want to do as I go through these.
Yeah, I would say, and, and my intention is that we go through the recommendations. If folks have questions about them, we should ask, ask them as, as we're doing them. But then we'll break, we'll take a break for dinner as always planned and then come back for broader, broader discussion. So it gives folks some time to, it gives staff some time to come back with anything else that's needed in the request about language, as well as council members to stew on what's been, what they've heard to then come back, have a discussion.
Okay. So just a reminder, before I get into these recommendations for tonight, we already have some recommendations for you related to amendments to the code that was released in February, right? So we released the ordinance, the full document in February. We then came on April 12th, April 13th with those red lines that we were asking for, and we discussed those at the planning and zoning commission and so forth. We then sent you a memo on June 1st, which included a series of amendments we were recommending as a result of the P and Z hearings and all that. So we've got the ordinance that was released in February. We've got the April 13th, which is the red lines. We've got the June 1st, which is amendments that we were recommending after P and Z. And then these are in addition, and that this is based on the conversation that we've had this week. So the first one is related to the tree requirements, just to go back to what Sarah was speaking to a few moments ago. And that related to some, some amendments to this, to the landscape and tree requirements within this ordinance to number one, permit these class three trees within that eight foot buffer along our streets. Make sure we got the best canopy trees that we can have along our streets, which is so much a part of Boise. And then the second thing is related to the permitting class two trees under the overhead power lines, which you just finished your discussion with Sarah about. So those are, we're recommending those changes.
Can we stop there for just one second? Madam Mayor. I think that I was misunderstood when I was talking about class two tree. I was actually concerned about class two, three, class two trees under power lines being too large. So I think that I have enough comfort now with the way that it's proposed, that we're fine. I'm not, I'm not wanting to start encouraging more class two trees because I think that you end up with those weird V trees under power lines and that's not great for anyone. So, thank you. But I, I think I was not understood. Giving the thumbs up over there.
So are you meaning, Council President, that you don't, with this, I mean, you can tell us when you're making motions, but you don't intend to make any changes to the tree canopy?
Not the class two trees under power.
Gotcha. Okay.
Madam Mayor. Director Keen, the, there's been some language had been provided earlier in the week. Do you feel like this recommendation is consistent with the requested language?
Yes, exactly. Directly addresses that.
Madam Mayor, now I'm confused. So we had an earlier discussion about how power lines are at different heights, and so we should permissively permit class one trees under power lines, class, class two, that doesn't matter. Because power lines are a different height, shouldn't we have as much flexibility as possible, including possibly class two trees under overhead lines?
We should get the biggest tree that we possibly can wherever we can. Yeah. When it's, when it's allowed by the agencies that we work with and within the parameters that we've got, which I think is what this addresses, is that there's still probably going to be a lot of spots where there are class ones, but by putting this in here, it gives us flexibility in some situations to get them there.
And so this proposal is more flexible than the current code.
Correct.
Got it.
That was an easy one. The next one relates to signs, just to quickly confirm all signs, whether on premise or off premise, will have an eight, eight, eight second dwell time. We're recommending that. The electrical substations, this was, this came to us this week from Idaho Power, who noted that currently substations are permitted as a conditional use in all of our districts and that in the proposed code, they were not. We're, we're suggesting this, that we add a definition for electrical substation as, as a conditionally, and then permit it as a conditional use in all zones with you specific standards. And, and the use specific standards are, are in there. I'm not sure why I have three bullets here. Anyway, the, what we would do is we'd define them, we would add them as a conditional use in any zone, and we'd add you, you specific standards that just has to do with landscaping around them and that they're, you know, they've got a, they've got a fence around them, that they're aesthetically as, as good as they can be. There was some discussion when Idaho Power was here, here earlier in the week, that they, they are committed to doing as good as they can with regard to these substations in terms of how they're buffered and these kinds of things. So we would want you specific standards related to this. So.
Madam Mayor, so let's, let me make sure that I'm getting this correct. In the proposed code that we've been looking at, they weren't allowed in a lot of different areas, even under a conditional use permit. Now we're saying that they actually can go in any of the areas with a conditional use permit. And the idea with the conditional use permit is that, I mean, I guess if you're into like 70 sci fi, they're pretty cool looking. But other than that, nobody really wants to look at the substations in these neighborhoods. They're just not great to look at. And so the conditional use permit allows us to require landscaping, fencing, different mitigation strategies to make them a little more welcoming into neighborhoods. And we haven't necessarily had the ability to do that before.
Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that's exactly correct.
Great. I think that's a great compromise.
Madam Mayor. Director Keen, if we don't want substations in residential neighborhoods, we shouldn't adopt this change. Is that correct?
If you're correct, and if you wanted them in some districts and just not residential districts, then we'd have to get to that level of precision. Because in the, in the current draft, we only permit them in industrial zones, I believe. So we, we'd have to start going through district by district.
Yep, Madam Mayor. And I think potentially the other issue here is if they had to go in and redo something and change the way the substation looks in some existing areas, it may be challenging with the pro code, proposed code to do that. But by putting the conditional use permit allowed, even in some of the areas that they're already at, it maybe gives them the ability to update, update that area, change that the way that it looks and feels in that area, while also giving us the ability to add some restrictions. Is that, was that sort of the issue too?
Well, that is another issue, which is that the way that ordinance is drafted today, you'd have existing electrical substations that, that would become a, a nonconforming use. So, and that was mentioned earlier in the week is, and that's what you're speaking to now, I think, Councilmember. So we're recommending this change. Next, as it relates to daycare centers, we, in the, in the draft that you have before you, you, we do have a conditional use permit requirement for daycare centers within mixed use zones, and we think that those should be by right. So that is a change we're recommending that daycare centers be permitted by right and mixed use zones without any conditional use permit. So, uh, that is a change we're recommending that daycare centers be permitted by right and mixed use zones without any conditional use permit. With regard to accessory dwelling units, a lot of discussion about this this week. Accessory dwelling unit is an important part of the ordinance. It's an important part of, you know, this, this collection of things that we're seeking to do to ensure that we've got a diversity of housing options for people and that we're addressing in, in as many ways as we can, this issue around housing affordability. And I want to mention that the accessory dwelling unit is a specific thing. You know, it's, it's a, it is accessory to a principal structure. So the idea is this isn't everything, it's just one thing in that collection of things we're doing. But an accessory dwelling unit is something that you've got a main house and then you build, whether that house is a single family home or it's a, the main house is part of a duplex or anything else. And then the, the next thing you do is you add an accessory, which is much smaller than, and accessory to the main principal structure. We also have allowances within this code that you can do two units on a lot. So if you want to do two larger units on a lot, you have that option too. There's, there's many options here, uh, as to how we get to housing affordability and diversity. But when it comes to this specific thing, the accessory unit to a principal building, we're, we're recommending these, these changes. One is that we not require any off-street parking for any ADU. Currently that, that can make it more difficult to do for lots of reasons, um, but we're recommending that we eliminate that requirement. We're also, uh, recommending that we remove the requirement for owner occupancy entirely. We had in the initial draft said that, um, you know, you, you, um, we allowed this provision for, uh, one of the units, whether it was a principal structure, the accessory structure, if it's, if it's, uh, if it meets affordability requirements, then you, then you were exempt from this requirement. We're saying exempt it entirely. And then we're also saying that exempts the accessory dwelling unit from the affordability requirement. So this would mean the standards that we're proposing for accessory dwelling units, which means you can do a larger accessory dwelling unit. We increase, increase the square footage of them and the technical standards of them to make them easier to accomplish. We would also do these things in furtherance of that. So.
Madam Mayor. Tim, thank you. Um, with respect to the new required parking, how does it, and what's the interplay if you end up making an ADU out of your garage?
Well, you'd have a lot more flexibility as to how you do things because the, the, the dwelling unit aspect of your garage would not require an off-street space. So the, the situation would be, do you have the parking on the lot to, for the principal building? And that would be the only question. So, uh, one note about that, of course, is that our off-street parking requirements for single-family duplex, triplex and quadruplexes goes down from two spaces per unit to one. So essentially what you'd have is, is a, is multiple ways that this helps in terms of adding ADUs in the city.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Um, Tim, I want to make sure that I caught, uh, distinction correctly. Um, we had heard testimony about allowing larger ADUs and you made mention of that, but I, I want clarification about where that change is within the current draft.
Yeah, we're, well, we, we currently you're permitted, I think it's a 700 square foot or 750 square foot. 700 square foot ADU, and in the proposed draft, is it 900 or 950, 900 square feet? So we went from 700 to 900 square feet in the draft before you, uh, but these are additional changes.
So the previous discussion was at 700, it had already been increased to 900.
We already took it to nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, I believe some of the requests that people had was to eliminate the size restrictions altogether. And I think what this is already doing, you know, even without these edits, is that it's already creating some more flexibility, but some people were saying, go further. No restri, size restrictions whatsoever. I, I'm pretty sure I'm remembering that correctly. Please correct me if I'm wrong. This one I think is really, really interesting and I'm in support of everything that's on there. I know that we've got some incredible staff members, one of them who's in the, in the back right now, Kyle on this phone. Hey, Kyle, um, who's doing a lot of work on accessory dwelling units. One of the things I know about folks in Boise is that they love to be part of the solution to solving problems. And everybody wants to figure out how we can help with affordable housing. Accessory dwelling units in people's backyards is one of those things that everybody has the capacity to do on their own piece of property. So I think it's something that we need to definitely explore on how we can make this as easy as possible. And while I'm definitely supportive of everything that's on here, I would love to continue that conversation in particular areas like the central bench, east end, north end, where you have so many lots that are non-conforming to begin with, that make it really, really difficult to figure out, how can you actually get one of these things in here? I think we need to figure out how we can make that process, um, easier. I think there's council members who have other, um, thoughts and maybe additions on this particular area. I'll tell you that I'm a big fan of what's on there already. And I think we need to have a future conversation on how we might be able to go even further in making that easier, especially in the non-conforming areas of town that have that density that could get even better by having, you know, an additional spot in the backyard.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, great point. And we've been discussing this and this came up, I think, last night, so I wanted to mention it. As I said earlier, the zoning ordinance isn't the solution to everything. We know we've got some things to do next. And among those things to do, if council decides to approve this ordinance, we think is number one, to create a user's guide for these affordability incentives. And it would include ADUs, which shows very clearly how you make the most of these regulations from entitlement standpoint and make it as easy as it can to do and promote that far and wide. And then the next step after that is to create pre-approved plans that help people actually go get a building permit. Cause this was mentioned last night too. We have a zoning ordinance, we've got to make that, that's step one. We've got another step, which is to make that zoning ordinance as easy as we possibly can to navigate for people seeking to do affordable housing and diversity of housing. And then we've got pre-approved plans, which has to do with the building permit. So we have that work to do after, if council decides to approve this, we, we have those standards that we can build on.
Madam Mayor. Um, my question about the square footage requirement. The ADU I'm envisioning is like a Rambler that has a basement apartment that has like the equivalent square footage of the first floor, would that apply that square footage restriction to say a basement ADU that has the equivalent square footage of, of the primary dwelling, which is essentially the upstairs?
The ADU requirements would not apply there because I would, that would be classified as an adaptive reuse.
Madam Mayor, um, Director Keen, um, uh, has there ever been any discussion about tying the square footage requirement to the size of the primary dwelling, like less than or equivalent to the primary dwelling? Um, rather than just having the, the flat 900 square foot? I mean, I could imagine a situation where a 3,000 square foot home, it would be totally appropriate to have a 1,100 square foot ADU in the backyard. But I just wanted to.
Mayor, Councilmember Nash, we, that has been discussed. So there's a lot of different discussions about how to, how to, um, how to define the appropriate size of this. And, and you know, it's a good point and, and there are some cities that have done that. I, I'll say that the variety of, of, of single-family primary unit sizes in those places is, is vastly uh, wider than they are in Boise. And, and we felt like this was a good scale for this city. So that's why we came to the 900 square feet.
Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to follow up on that line of thinking. What's the downside to eliminating the square footage requirement?
Well, I think it's, it's not a downside so much, Councilmember Willis. It's just that, again, we've got many tools here. This one is just about this accessory unit to the main structure. If you want to do a really much larger second unit, then you've got other ways to do that in the ordinance. So, you know, on a single family lot, you can do two units. So it's just that let's have this, these multiple ways to address these issues. But, but this is actually different than that, you know?
Thank you.
What I find interesting on this, I was thinking about it, um, is that like, I was reading this article about, I don't know, some city that had, and they were highlighting this house with an ADU behind it. But the ADU was bigger than my first home. And it made me think that, well, maybe in that city, they didn't actually let you just put two homes on a lot. Cause let's call it what it is, it's, it's a home versus, um, an ADU in our community. When you have the options for different tools. Um, I mean, that's kind of how I was looking at it when the director and I were talking about it earlier.
Madam Mayor, um, I appreciated the extra, um, the extra context around, here's something that you could do if you wanted two homes on a lot. Here's what an ADU is intended to do. And here's the extra special things we're going to do so that more people can build ADUs. But then if they do want to build two homes, like they can do that too. They just don't get special extra stuff, which I think is totally appropriate. And that, um, what you said, Mayor, reminded me of when I first moved to Idaho, I realized that people have cabins that are actually like giant houses. And I was like, this is not a cabin. Cabins are like little log things that, you know, maybe don't have running water. Like this is a lodge, this is a home. Um, so I think that a lot of it is in how we define things, you know? It's like an ADU is something that's small, it's smaller than the primary dwelling. Um, you know, 900 square feet in Boise is, I think, an appropriate size for that because our houses just aren't big. And then if you want something that's 1,200 square feet, well, you just build a second home and we have a process for that. So I really appreciated that, um, especially in the context of stuff that we heard from housing advocates, um, that we can do all of these things. It's just a matter of how we define things and who gets something extra special.
Madam Mayor. I, I agree with all of that. The, the ironic and, and sort of hilarious thing is that they're all small homes or homes. And so at some point, a house, at some point, if you liberalize enough, you lose the distinction of the category ADU, and that's Tim's point, it's no longer an accessory. So you want to preserve the criteria to preserve the category ADU when your policy goal no longer cares. And so my encouragement would be, as we continue to think about ways to become more flexible, the conversation to have might be abolishing the ADU and just talking about how many housing units you're putting on a property. Because at some point, the distinction stops making a difference. And what we just heard from Tim was, well, we need to preserve some differences so the distinction still exists. And if we're really moving towards not having the distinction, it's not, you know, it's not a topic to take up right now, but it's as we think in the next year or two about where we're trying to get and do we want to liberalize ADUs more? Well, maybe these two categories just no longer make sense at all.
Mayor, Councilmember Bejant and Councilmember Widdings, I think these are really good points. I, I think it's, this is an important discussion just for Boise. As it relates to, you know, we're used to that one headline, that one solution. And, and the, the value of what's come out of this process is there's not one. And, and it's hard for people to sometimes acknowledge this, which is you've got more, we've just sat here and talked about three different options for the same situation that would get you, you know, multiple units. The adaptive reuse of a house, an accessory dwelling unit, and then just two units on a lot, all of which are options. Thank you. Uh, next neighborhood transition standards. So there was some discussion this week about, this relates to properties that are zoned R2 or R3 adjacent to our MX zones. And, uh, this in part has to do with this issue of rezoning within an eighth of a mile of the streets that we zone MX3, but it also has to do with neighborhoods like the West Side, which you heard from residents there asking for including these transition standards as protections in that neighborhood. So we've looked at this, uh, this week and result, as a result of the public discussion and are recommending that we, we do add that protection to the R2 and the R3, the transition from the MX and have looked specifically at those places that were zoning MX. We didn't want to make it too much of a constrained condition for those MX zones, but we feel like this can be accomplished and address that concern that we've heard this week.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to voice my support for this. This is something I really cared about. I thought it was something that was important that came out of the public hearing about how neighborhoods remain neighborhoods. And it's a very constructive change. So thank you.
Okay, um, this has to do with the affordability and sustainability incentives. And this has been a discussion, of course, throughout this process and beginning in earnest last spring and summer, when we, we decided to organize the, the ordinance around incentives as it relates to affordability and density and so forth. And it's been a very healthy discussion. It's, it was the right move, I think, as I've said multiple times tonight. But there has been this debate about this requirement around these particular units, because what we're talking about is times in which you get additional density that we want to ensure that, that, that additional density is tied to affordability. And in that process, we also added the requirement around sustainable practices having to do with water and energy consumption. And, and just, you know, lots of important perspectives on this, but we, we are tonight going to recommend that we, in fact, decouple those two requirements. And, and in these cases where you're getting additional units and you're taking advantage of these incentives, you would have the option then of the affordable incentive or the sustainability incentive, rather than having them together. So it becomes, you're meeting the affordability incentive requirement or the sustainability one. And so we're recommending that the, we do decouple those and, and, uh, so we can discuss those.
Madam Mayor. Oh, just very briefly, um, I, I, first, I think this is great. But second, if in a year, we have such a flood of sustainable and affordable housing coming in under these applications, that we just have this wonderful problem to deal with, there's too many. Then I think we should consider recoupling them with an end.
I actually would say that, um, maybe instead of recoupling them, we look at whether or not there's a process to further incentivize the coupling of them so that, um, both for market projects that are sustainable, that there's, there become incentives. Um, but if you're both meeting affordability goals and sustainability goals, then there might be some further incentives.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I think this is a really wise and important change because we have two very, very good goals that I don't think necessarily can go together at this time. And I was really worried that we would lose affordability or we would lose sustainability. Um, so I'm, I'm very happy about this change. My question is, the recommended changes for instance of one, three, four and five, is there any place where this still exists in the current draft that's not listed here?
I, I believe the correct answer is there's no other place where it would be found. I've been corrected. And the only place that it. Oh, see, I was right. Anyway, so this is the only place where this is found.
So there's no sub-bullet somewhere where these still exist as a, as a package deal?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is a tough one, I think, for me. And I think I can get there. I think one of the problems with innovation is that you don't always know what the result is going to be. And if you did, then you, you know, you would know exactly what to do and, and we don't. So like, there's some things that are in this code that we don't know exactly what the outcome is going to be, but we know what we're trying to do. And so I guess what I would say is that I, I can, I can be on board here and people can still do both if they want to. Um, and we, we heard that, uh, I think it was from Habitat for Humanity, um, Neighbor Works, we heard this from Neighbor Works. They came in and they said, you can do both, um, or you can do both to a certain extent. And I hope that people still choose to do that because I think it's the right thing to do. I do think it saves people a lot of funds over time with their utility bills and everything that's else that, that else is there. One of the things that they brought up specifically was even if you're not going to put the solar panels on top, like put the plugins that are there, you know, get the house ready so that when it can make those changes, it does have the ability to do that. And you can do that relatively cheaply. And so I, I really hope, uh, that that is where it goes, even with the ORE in there, that people still have the ability to push as far as they can um, on the sustainability side when they're doing affordable housing. Cause I think that that's what the folks that are living in there really need.
Madam Mayor. Tim, could you walk me through how this would apply to triplexes and fourplexes? What, what are the options and scenarios? And now that this could be potentially ORE?
Well, that would mean that in, in the case, when you're in those R1 districts where you do have the right to do more than two. Well, that would mean that in in the case when you're in those R one districts where you do have the right to do more than two units, three or four, we had been saying in the ordinance that you would have to meet those affordability thresholds and institute the sustainability requirements within those units. So now we would be saying as you come in for a permit for those things, you would have to show us that you're addressing one of them at least.
And in the third unit and the fourth unit?
Correct. One thing I'll mention, Mayor and Council, that I'll come back to because we've discussed it several times here at the end is this issue of us checking back in with you regarding how the ordinance is going and what amendments we might need. I'll get to that at the end. The next item is bike parking, and I wanted to mention a couple of things about this. One is that um, the issue that we talked about this week at a specific apartment downtown, I wanted to mention that. And how this ordinance addresses that problem. The issue that arose is that the existing ordinance did not clearly define what constitutes, you know, what would what would qualify as a parking space. And so the existing ordinance we have is not clear enough. And in the case of the Thomas Logan, what ended up happening is just because of that lack of clarity, the decision was you could use your unit as a bike parking space. And, okay, so that that was a decision that was made some time ago. And and it resulted, it kept, you know, the the concern we heard and understand, that's what this resulted from. So in the proposed ordinance, we're getting very specific about what qualifies as a space or not. And so what we we define what a long term park bike parking space is and what a short term one is. And then we require a certain number per unit. So your unit does not apply as a bike parking space. And so you see that language here um, with regard to how the new language would address this issue. And it specifically not only says defines what long term parking is, it says what it isn't to make sure that we don't have that situation again. So that's one thing. Then, as it relates to the new off street or the bike parking requirements, we had proposed in the in the in the um, existing version of the code that we have one long term space per unit and one short term space per, I'm sorry, one long term space per unit is how we required it. And then we required one short term space per ten units within any individual project. So what we're recommending here is that we actually do tie it to bedrooms. So this would mean that uh, for we'd have one space for a studio or a one bedroom unit. And then you'd add an additional half a space for every additional bedroom is the change that we're proposing. So this is an increase in the number of bike parking spaces based on this formula.
Madam Mayor, um, the short term basically meaning it's outside in front of the building, anybody visitor can park up there. All right, so here's what I'm thinking about in my head. My partner and I are living in a house and we've got uh, we've got one kid. And this means that we will have one bike parking spot for the two folks that are living in the first bedroom. And then half of a bike parking spot for the kid or kids that are living in the other bedroom. So like that math seems funny to me, um, as far as like if we're actually wanting to provide enough bike parking. And I'm gonna make an assumption that not every single person in the world has a bicycle, but I'm also going to make assumption that a lot of people do. And so I I'm trying to figure out why we got to one space per first bedroom and point five and not just one space per bedroom.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton. This does apply to multifamily development. So it would not be a requirement that's associated with a single house.
No, I'm talking about multi-family. So like many multifamily housing complexes that I'm familiar with will have maybe five people living, you know, in a three bedroom place. And in a three bedroom place, it looks like you're probably getting just a little over two and a half bike parking spots, even though there might be five people living there. So I'm just kind of curious, like the point five aspect, how did we arrive? Is that a a standard that we saw somewhere else?
Often see, yeah. And and within multifamily projects, of course, then those add up to a certain number of spaces. If there's a half space in there, it would be one more space than that. And and you're addressing the increase in demand based on those additional bedrooms. But you're going to have situations where, you know, a unit doesn't have any need for bike parking and then others that have more. So it just, it's just to kind of seek to to balance it out. And then you get a number based on this this ratio, and that's frequently done.
And Madam Mayor, to be clear, I think this is much better than where we were at. Especially when we're talking about walkability, bikeability, creating neighborhoods where people can ride. I don't personally feel like it goes quite far enough. And I think that that could be a larger discussion about bike parking again in the future. Again, I think this is significantly better than where it's at. What I don't want to see is there not be enough bike parking and then kids' bikes being parked outside in the rain and not usable, not protected, getting stolen, things along those lines. And so that may be a discussion for the future, but it is a it is a big improvement of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Halliburton. And we 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 ran some scenarios and coming up with this proposal for you. And I think we'll see a dramatic increase in the amount of of a long term covered, secured bike parking. Oh, this came up last night and and there was some discussion at council about a suggestion that was made regarding the ability to uh, potentially reduce the amount of off street parking that you provide. And in the case where you get a conditional use permit that would be issued by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're recommending that change, that in cases where people are seeking to do less parking than is than is what is required, that we allow for that through a conditional use process that goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Madam Mayor. I just think this is so elegant. I love it and thank you for picking it up so quickly. If the conditional use permit is approved, it's demonstrated that the adverse impact of being underparked has been mitigated and the parking becomes purely a technicality. So I just think it's lovely and great and it's been less than twenty four hours and I I appreciate it seeing it here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Tim, talk to me a little bit more about the parking requirements. You know that this has been an issue for me for some time. My district is a place where we want to walk, we want to bike, it's heavily developed. We have to use our cars, particularly have families. So tell us about what's required right now. And, you know, Councilmember Bejant talked about the technicalities of what this would do, but I think it's important to to educate the public on this, particularly for those of us who live outside of the downtown core.
Mayor, Councilmember Willetts and Councilmember Willetts, you'll know this is a, this will be a circuitous route that I take here describing this because off street parking requirements are somewhat nuanced. Um, let me put it that way. I'll try to simplify this and get to a level of specificity that you're seeking. Let me know if you want me to go further, but I'll speak to it in in several ways. One is relates to single family, multi, single family home, duplex, triplex, quadruplex. In any of those cases, what we currently require, and I mentioned this earlier, is two spaces off street per unit. In the proposed code, we're we're suggesting that we reduce that to one space per unit. So a fifty percent reduction for single family duplex, triplex, quadruplex. So that's that's that one. As it relates to multifamily units, and this really relates to commercial too, but I'll mention a um, an ex an exception to that in a way. But but really the standards around multifamily and and commercial remain the same. They're not different in this new code than they are in the current one. With the exception of cases where we're providing some incentive. Um, you know, if you're providing some level of affordability in an MX three district, for instance, or MX four, then you get a reduction in parking associated with that. But set that aside for a minute and just a case by case basis, you know, apples to apples, building a new apartment building or something or mixed use. The standards that exist today are this are the same. We've changed the way we calculate it to be associated with bedrooms versus square footage, but it's essentially the same requirements. You're not seeing big changes when it comes to multifamily, mixed use, commercial. One, a couple of other nuances I'll mention, one is that um, okay, yeah.
We know that one of the ways that folks make the budget work is to have roommates. Happened for a long time. I did it. Everybody's done it at some point. And you often have multiple vehicles. So how would this affect that sort of situation?
Which situation? I'm sorry.
We have multiple, we have multiple basically individuals living in the same and whether it's a single family home or a multifamily, and they're going to have multiple vehicles.
Well, yeah, and I I think the the thing about this is that it relates to this. I'm going to speak really to the single family duplex, triplex, because that's where the change is. The other ones, we don't really have a change in. But the idea here is that we're just going to have to use, you know, and and often it will be the case that people will provide more off street parking than we're requiring. All this is about is what we're requiring, the one space per unit. We'll certainly have cases where people are providing more because they feel like in order to sell it or they want additional off street parking. The only question is what is the public saying you must provide? So we're just saying one unit. And from a public kind of policy perspective, the idea is the more parking we require, the less affordable the units will be. We don't want to require that. And often by providing more off street parking, it kind of deadens the street. It makes it less interesting to walk and all these kinds of things. So rather than having the off street parking, we would prefer that some of that parking be handled on the street. So that's that's the big difference.
So Councilmember Halliburton joked about Jimmy language, and I'm going to put this in Lucy language. What I hear you saying is we are deregulating parking, but the city will not stop a developer or a homeowner from adding more.
Thank you, Councilmember Willetts. That's correct.
Madam Mayor, um, Councilmember Willetts, if I could add something to that. Um, we had a really interesting development that was proposed several years ago. I can't remember if you were on at that point. It was on Sixteenth and State Street. And it was going to be high ceilings designed for local nonprofit workers, artists. You know, it was kind of an area where they wanted people to be able to live a car free sort of downtown lifestyle. There's a chance that it maybe doesn't make sense um, to have reduced or no car parking in every part of town or every sort of situation. But there might be some really cool projects that could happen for a specific group of people that were more interested in living a car free lifestyle in a particular area of town where maybe it's close to the green pell, a pathway, a transit line or something along those lines. And I guess I would note that like this was an idea that came up through public testimony, um, which is one of the reasons why I I think it's so incredible when people show up and they share these different specific ideas is that it is sort of like an idea for an innovative way for us to explore ways where in the right circumstance, there may not need to be the amount of car parking that we would typically require. But it might come with conditions of additional bike parking, like the number that I was wanting to see a little bit earlier, or maybe bike charging stations or the proximity to a path. I think that they might have to show through that conditional use permit that this would actually work and be possible. So I think it's kind of an interesting innovation to say, like, let's see if this might work in some very specific spots. But there's probably some other specific spots where this really wouldn't work, in my opinion. Um, where and that's kind of where that conditional use permit comes in. And that's kind of how I see this one. But again, I think it's really interesting and really an idea that came straight from a community member's input, I think, within the last um, the last few minutes of testimony. So pretty, pretty cool.
Madam Mayor, one more comment because this is really important to me, particularly for my district. You know, we are, we are on the edge of the edge, right? This is something that's come up multiple times. And I think one of the things that I brought up really early is ensuring that that folks could look at where development was going to be located and ensuring that that was cognizant and that the city recognized that there might be different strokes for different folks based on that. And I I think what this could do is ensure that if there's areas in, you know, the far reaches of Boise, that neighbors can really talk about that and ensure that. And then also there's a marketability because you're not, you're you, it will be very difficult to be in a development where there's not parking and you rely on a car.
Yes. Agreed, Councilmember. Next, we have noticing for type two applications. This has been a frequent topic of conversation this week, relates to our process. And I've mentioned multiple times this week, not a single developer asked me to create or asked us to create these types and allow for this type two to move forward. The whole purpose of the type two is to to make what we want as a city, the things that we feel like are important in addressing our goals around affordability and mobility. Let's make them make them as easy as we possibly can in the current draft of the ordinance. As you know, there is not a requirement for the type twos to provide notice to the neighbors. And so what we're recommending here is that with the type two applications, we do include. So remember with the type twos that uh, upon submission of an application, the neighborhood does get notified. So that remains as it is today. So today, when we get an application, the neighborhood is notified. That would remain the case in this new requirement. Also, in addition, that doesn't exist today, hasn't. We've created the development tracker and it's live, but that will be another way that people can follow what's happening in their neighborhood. And you can actually sign up to get emails on when things are coming in. So you, the neighborhoods still get noticed for type twos. We'll now have the development tracker that people can sign up for the, so they can see what's going on. We're also recommending, though, that that in the case of these type twos, we do send a notice to the adjacent property owners upon approval of the uh, perm, the the application. And of course, they have a right to appeal that if that's if if they'd like to. And the city would send those notices. So we're recommending that change as a result of all the discussion that's gone on this week.
So I just want to be clear on this one. This means that folks that are adjacent to proposals get notified before an application is made, is decided upon and then after, so they receive two.
No, the neighbor, thank you, Mayor, the 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 neighborhood does receive notice when we receive applications for any of any type.
You mean the neighborhood association?
The neighborhood association, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And we've talked this week about the varied uh, capacity of neighborhood associations and so forth. But the reality is today we provide a notice upon submission of of applications to the neighborhood associations. We would continue to do that in the new code on type twos. What we're adding here, Mayor, is this notice to adjacent property owners when a permit has been or when an application has been approved. So remember, the type twos are allowed. This, you know, you submit an application for a type two, this is a permitted use. Part of the way in which we're going to make the things we want need easier to do is that you meet these technical requirements and you are approved, but we will notice the neighbor so that they know of that. They'll be able to look at what those plans are and and, you know, they'd be able to, not encouraging this, but that they'd be able to appeal that that would go to the hearings examiner for a hearing on that appeal. So this is an additional requirement around these type twos that we're suggesting.
And I'm here. With respect to the word adjacent, I presume that means immediately adjacent, that we're just talking about the properties, the left, right and back. So it would just be roughly four notifications that we're talking about, not the whole neighborhood impacted.
Councilmember Haney Keith, yes, that is correct. It would be the adjacent neighbors.
Madam Mayor, Tim, we've heard so much this week about people wanting to be involved, people wanting to have a voice about what happens in their neighborhood. The pros and cons of neighborhood associations, I think, personally, I think they're fundamental. And obviously, there's folks that we we want more involvement in those. Why wouldn't we do this to the neighbors upon submission? Like, why would we do it afterwards and say, hey, by the way, this just happened to you? Like, why wouldn't we do it ahead of time?
Well, Councilmember, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, the, our thinking is this, you know, when, again, these are permitted, type twos are a permitted use, we want them to happen. These, these are fundamentally a part of this new zoning ordinance, type twos. If you look at that list of type two things, you know, it's you're doing a triplex on an individual's single family lot. You're doing uh, an apartment building on a on Fairview. You know, it's it's these things that are so fundamental to our success. And so if you meet these standards, you're allowed to do that. The the concern that we have about notice upon submission of an application is it creates a real, um, we think that that sends the wrong message to people because you get a notice upon application, you're calling city staff and saying, when's the hearing? Or how can I weigh in on this? The actual fact is you can't. So why would we create that wildly unrealistic expectation by sending somebody a notice to basically say, come in here and give us your opinion on this application, which we're going to approve? The point at which it becomes really important is once we've approved it, that they have a chance to appeal that if, in fact, upon a review of the plans, they have an issue with it. That that's our feeling about this. It's an important difference. And, and you know, this happens, you know, and you've seen this frustration before council so many times. People come and say, I want to have a say, and I understand that. The fact of the matter is, in many cases, we don't have the right to say no. And it really creates a lot of frustration and, and, you know, feelings of discontent about the government when you're invited into a process that you actually have no control over. I mean, why would we create that expectation is the concern?
This was my concern with noticing type twos, the, exactly, the expectation setting and then the perceptions of our legitimacy when we, when we send a message that's received as an invitation to participate and then people arrive and they find out that our hands are tied and, you know, there's not much opportunity for, for participation. This solves that problem really well. The timing is right, and I think this is a great solution. So I thank you for this recommendation.
Mayor, Councilmember Bajin, thank you. And I think it kind of speaks to what we've heard this week. We heard from multiple neighborhoods that the issue that we have is really just that we want to know so that, you know, whoever it is that's doing it, we can coordinate with them. If there's an issue around my driveway or a fence or something like that, just that we know. And, and we feel like this addresses that.
For people's sense of time, I think we've got four slides or more.
Yeah, I'm getting towards the end here and we can break. The, the next one has to do with neighborhood association testimony time. And as you know, in the current ordinance, there was a concern around the unpredictability of how much time neighborhood associations would get to speak in any particular case, based on the way the ordinance is currently drafted. So we, in the current draft, we specified that there would be five minutes for a neighborhood association in a case that comes to public hearing. We're recommending that that be added, that we add to that to make it 10 minutes. And that, just to be clear, that those neighborhoods that are speaking for those 10 minutes would be within the notification area of that case, you know, just to be clear about that. So as you know, in any case, it may differ in, in terms of the type of case, but there would be an area that we're notifying for that case relative to the public hearing. So the area that is subject to those notifications, that neighborhood or neighborhoods would be given those 10 minutes. It would be those neighborhoods, not, you know, if you're in a neighborhood on the other side of the city, as much as you might care about this, you can certainly come in as an individual and speak to it. But as a neighborhood, only those neighborhoods within the notification area would have those 10 minutes.
But to be clear, you could also come as the neighborhood association, but you get three minutes. So you could say that your neighborhood association has taken a vote on this issue as well. Share your position, but it's, it's, it's the time piece.
That's right.
Right?
That's correct.
Madam Mayor, I think there's going to be some discussion on this particular one. I think this is good. I think I would maybe like to see it taken just a step further, but I don't know how to do this in a subjective, in an objective way. So I think the 10 minutes is great. I think that everybody should get that 10 minutes. And I think that it makes a lot of sense to do it within the notification radius or the neighborhood that's in there. I do think that there's applications where they're much more complex and that there should be an ability for the neighborhood association to request additional time from staff on those particular occasions. I had thought about this in my head and trying to figure out like, should staff reach out to them on a certain type of application? That seemed problematic, just because it, you know, it's hard to figure out what it might be. And so in my head, there would be a way for a neighborhood association, when they knew that a project was coming up, to request additional time, you know, from the staff to do it. And I'll kind of explain why. I think that this has been, you know, one of the more interesting conversations during this public hearing. I think we, somebody brought it up, I think, Esti, maybe from South Cole, maybe brought up that neighborhood associations have the ability to be one of the city's greatest resources. And I absolutely agree with that statement. And I think that we've seen that demonstrated during certain times where there was incredible amounts of outreach that was done, nuanced understanding of a particular neighborhood, really a lot of community involvement that they did in that area that was helpful for council. But I also have experienced times when, you know, that wasn't the case. And I heard that, I heard that expressed during the public hearing as well. People whose neighborhood associations didn't reach out or people who reached out to their neighborhood associations and felt unheard. And one thing I want to recognize is these are volunteers in the community that are, that are trying to build a stronger neighborhood. And that's not easy to do. And we know at the city, the outreach isn't always easy to do either. I think there's a way for us to work with them and setting some expectations on what we want to see if we're requesting additional time as far as outreach goes and involvement or expectations like Council President Woodings really sort of delivered on through this process, trying to understand how much did you engage with your neighborhood before giving testimony? And we kind of saw it all over the board, you know, folks that were doing a ton of it in really interesting and innovative ways. I think there was a book club that maybe Marissa did. And then we saw some other ones who really didn't have a lot of those same conversations. So I think that there is, I think that there needs to be a greater conversation with the city and some of our neighborhood associations on how we might give them resources to do more outreach and also set some expectations and accountability for that, which I think is a future discussion that wouldn't be in code. But the difference between five minutes and 10 minutes, I think that there's only good things that can happen in that extra five-minute period of time, extra nuances that might be able to be brought up. And I don't see what the harm is in that extra five minutes or in additional time on a more complex application.
Madam Mayor, I just want to note that this, this piece of code is a huge compromise. And I mean, I think that council members are kind of all over the board on what we kind of think neighborhoods should get. I would note that I think that there's a way in policy going forward to address some of these issues of neighborhood engagement, how neighborhoods are engaging, helping them develop best practices on engagement so that when they come to us with neighborhood concerns, that it really reflects what they're hearing from neighbors and not just a small group of board members who are often, you know, property owners. They have a lot of extra time on their hands. And sometimes that, as we've seen, doesn't necessarily reflect the neighborhood as a whole. So I think that going forward, you know, over the next year, we work on those things in policy. CE helps through neighborhood engagement and really developing some of those so that we have a little bit more accountability. And neighborhood associations can be that tool to reaching into neighborhoods and getting neighborhood feedback that we've seen, I think, done so well in some neighborhoods and just not well at all in others.
Madam Mayor, I think it's helpful to think about it. It, it's so easy for everybody to become defensive in this conversation because it's volunteers truly doing the best work that they can on behalf of their neighborhood, which is something that everybody cherishes. And so I think it's helpful to think about it in terms of the institution of neighborhood associations as a unit, rather than particular neighborhood associations that take some of it out. My fundamental concern is that we can be doing better. We can be doing better at being a good conduit of information from the neighborhood to the city council. We can be doing better at truly reflecting the people and the values of the neighborhood and of the neighborhood as we want it to change. And another way of saying we could be doing better is I don't think yet we're doing well enough. And so my view isn't that we don't want to hear the neighborhood association's perspective. We do. Or that we want to shut the neighborhood associations out. That's not what we want, but we want to do better and we want to get better. And what I heard from both of my colleagues just now is there are ways that we can address that and there are ways that we can lean in, help facilitate neighborhood associations of being more effective in their work, help them, you know, get us the information we need. And I think that's great. If I had my druthers, I would work on that process. And once we got there, expand the amount of time. I don't have my druthers. I know where my colleagues are on this. But kind of for the record, my view is that this second piece of work, getting better, helping the institution of neighborhood associations perform their function more effectively, becoming more successful in the relationship, both with the city, council and the neighborhood associations and the neighborhood associations and their constituents, is laudable and very, very important. And so I hope that we do pick up that work in the next year and that we do move forward, that this doesn't become a lingering condition, the conditional use permit, that kind of language that we've had, that we really do do this work because it's important for, for everybody.
I, I also want to be clear that we will have discussion time after motions are made as well. So, um, Councilmember Nash. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, can I get some clarification on that? Are we going to have motions on each one of these? Because I think that's an important point.
Right, but discussion can be had on all of these during, I mean, this was intended to be a time for questions rather than the kind of discussion deliberation on what the time ought to be or what else ought to be added. And we've, we've stuck with that until just now when everybody started sharing their opinions on the neighborhood time. And I want to be sensitive to our time. We still have four more, so I don't want to inadvertently have us move into that mode for the next four slides as well.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question for staff, if anyone doesn't have on this particular issue. The question, the question, Tim, would be in that additional aspect that I was talking about. And if, if there's any recommendation, any feasibility, any process that would make sense for a neighborhood association that wanted more time about getting it, requesting it, being granted because it was a annexation or a reason, like, I'm trying to figure out, like, is there a way to get that extra time based off of the type of thing that we're seeing? Or is it a request or how might a process like that work?
Oh, I'm going to jump in on this one. And I'd say that development of policy after the ordinance is created is the way to do that. Because within the language of the ordinance, getting, we can't, getting super prescriptive will, could preclude another time when, that could be captured in a policy.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense in a policy. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is there a way within code, the correct way of saying they will be given 10 minutes of testimony and may be given additional time if requested? That's where I think that the code part is. It's not necessarily the policy and figuring it out. It's making sure that there is some sort of wording in the code that opens that up, and that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Or upon consent of the chair. I mean, it's, it could be as simple as that.
Yep.
But should not be more, it should not be more delineated in, in an ordinance itself.
Yep. And so I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is like, if that was something that was going to happen, is there a language that might allow us for that flexibility and extra time?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. We can speak to that. Okay. With regard to conditions of approval, this relates to, we've heard in a few cases this week about concerns related to a development is done and then the improvements aren't made. And I mentioned on Monday, the issue here is that the language isn't clear enough. Decisions that have been made in the past at times have not been clear enough as to when improvements are required to be made. So we've heard this from multiple people. I've experienced cases myself, when you look at the language of the approvals and especially around conditions, the lack of clarity means that we've get this frustration around the improvements aren't made in a timely way. And so what we're recommending is this additional language that had recommending changes to the common procedures for decisions and conditions. And this language would say that all conditions of approval are required for, for required improvements be completed within one year of the first occupancy permit being issued. So this gets to this issue of those improvements don't end up being made, if they're ever made, until the end of an entire development or project. We're adding this language to address that issue.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Tim, just to be clear, this would be the default position for conditions. And then if we had an application where you need the conditions, you need the conditions satisfied prior to occupancy.
Right.
Then you just make that clear in those specific conditions for that project.
Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, that's correct. We were trying to add language here that we could, that we could count on consistently, but understanding each project is of a different scale and size. And there may be cases where you need to add a condition that's different than this. But we want to make sure there's specificity that we can count on regardless. Follow up with city council. So this just has to do with, we've talked this week a lot about, you know, the, the the times in which we'll come back to council. We're adopting a new ordinance for the first time in 75 or 57 years in Boise. We know it will take time to adjust. We're very confident in the overall structure of this ordinance, the way that it's tied to this physical city, the way the, the incentives we've added, really excited about that. But we know there's going to be details that we're going to have to work through. So we're recommending a couple of things. One is that we come back to council in November of this year to do any kind of minor amendments or cleanup that we need to do upon council's adoption of this, just to check in and, and see if there's any cleanup that needs to be done before the, the ordinance is effective. We're recommending a December 1st effective date, which is on my next slide. And then upon the effective date of the ordinance, which would be December 1st of this year, we would come back to council every 12 months after to give a report to council on how the ordinance is progressing. What are those amendments that are, we're recommending to the ordinance based on the experience we've had with it? So we would, we would commit to these things. We're recommending these, these check-ins with council on a regular basis.
I've got a question for you on this one. So the minor amendments, that's truly minor. It's not changes to the many of the things we've discussed. But is it related to the kind of technical operational needs that could potentially arise due to implementation? Is that what you're getting at?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. You know, we, there's a big effort within the department and within the city as a whole, not just in the planning department, around implementation of this code, which has to do with all these procedures that we're changing to make it as simple as possible for people. It has to do with the technology that supports this work. So just in, in further, moving further on all that implementation, we're anticipating there could be something that we've got to adjust here potentially. We don't know this, but in case, we want to just suggest that we have a check-in in November, just to see if there's anything that's arisen. This would not be substantive changes. We're not talking about changing the incentives. We're not talking about changing the structure. We're not talking about changing the land use categories, anything that's substantive. Just is there any procedural or minor amendments that need to be made to make this work as well as it can when we implement it? And then again, effective date, that's recommended is December 1st of this year. And then concluding, this is the Planning Commission's recommendations. These are the motions that we need tonight, the action that we need tonight. We do want the ordinance adopted with those red line edits. We included in a note to the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 13th. We do want to include those recommendations that we made in a memo to council on April 1st. And then lastly, we do want to make those recommendations. We do want to include those recommendations that we made to you tonight. That is my last slide.
All right, thank you. Any further question? You have something?
I don't have a question about this.
All right. Anything further that you've got something, so go ahead. And then we'll, we'll break for recess and then come back. And when we come back, there'll be some, some language related to Lupa.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I don't have a question about this, but I do have a note to council that we did receive some late correspondence from Violia. Their representative had been here with comments. And he left those written comments with a staff member. And so now we have those in our email inbox if we'd like to review on break.
And that is, is that tied to, nope. James will come back with the language related to the requests that we had from Councilmember Bajin. Okay, all right.
Just on that note, Mayor, that we received a tremendous amount of additional correspondence this week, which we have, which we have taken in and categorized and included in the record. That is one of them, but there's been many this week.
All right, we will break for half an hour, then we're back. All right, we are all back, so we'll go ahead and get started. I think Tim Keen, you've got one item more. I think that, is that correct? We're going to hear from Tim on the deed restrictions and then we're doing Lupa. James, you've got language? Great.
Mayor, members of council, with regard to the deed restriction, this relates to the fact that we would be, we would be eliminating that in the case of the ADU. So is that the question?
Oh, sorry, no, the, the question was had about the number of years of restriction, the length of restriction on affordability. So 50, as in the code, proposed code versus 20, which was a question that surfaced this week.
Yes, it's a very good question, one that we're concerned about as well. Yes, it's a very good question, one that we're concerned about as well. What's the right number of years as it relates to this? When we were drafting the code last summer in particular, which is when we added the incentives for affordability, there was a lot of discussion about the length of time. And we received multiple recommendations at that time from people that have been working around the country on affordable housing issues to make the, uh, length of affordability as long as you possibly can. And they actually, in multiple cases, strongly recommended fifty years. Just based on what experience has been in other places. This is something we've experienced as well. When you have periods that are less than that, ten, twenty, even thirty years, those time, uh, those time periods and quicker than you can imagine. So you're always scrambling to address affordable housing that's coming off its, its, its length of affordability requirement. So the recommendation was strongly that we stick with fifty years. So, so we, we have included that in this set of incentives as our requirement. I will share with you, we have, we have been concerned about it as well as something that, is that the right amount? Is that too onerous? What will its effect be on whether this incentive is successful or not? It is an area that we think we're going to have to pay close attention to. And is one that we would expect to definitely come back to report to city council on a regular basis as to what we're seeing as it relates to that specific thing and its influence on the success of these incentives.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
You know, one of the reasons that we're here is that we're, this code is fifty years old and it's not working. So I wonder if staff has given any thought to downsides to a commitment that is fifty years long in light of the problems that we're having with this fifty-year-old code?
Mayor, Councilmember Bajin, I think that's exactly right. I mean, that's part of the concern here is, is around the capacity of this community to address these big issues that are not short-term. They're long-term issues. And, and we need to be thinking longer term about how these requirements that we're setting ensure that we're not only creating the affordable housing, but we're maintaining it over time. So I think that's a very good point.
Madam Mayor, um, Tim, when you said that you had talked to affordable housing advocates in fifty was the, what they recommended, what was that based on?
Experience in other cities, you know, I mean, and this, things like inclusionary zoning, of course, are not new in cities. We're not implementing inclusionary zoning, to be clear. Our ordinance is, is designed around incentives. I spoke to this in the memo that I sent to the Planning Commission in, in April that we're not, we're not able to do inclusionary zoning in Idaho, so we are not doing that. Uh, that's part of how we organize this, this, this ordinance around incentives. But that approach, that technique to deal with affordability in cities is not new. And you've had cities that have used various numbers of years as their requirement around those periods of affordability from as short as ten years to as long as fifty years. And, and the conclusion from the experience in various cities was that you need to go as long as you can. And, and provided that, that, that the technique that you're including is successful. But, but seek to do as long a period of time as you can. And that's why we landed at fifteen.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Were those, were those other cities similar to us in that their, their affordability requirements were incentives? Or was it kind of across the board? I'm, what I'm trying to get at is like, does the evidence suggest that a fifty-year affordability requirement deed restriction will be as effective and as able to be built by local developers as a twenty-year requirement?
Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, I mean, this is a very important conversation and point. It is in no way our interest in creating a period of affordability that dampens the success of this incentive, period. The, but, but we thought this, this concern around this moment in terms of ensuring long periods of affordability, that we, that we are very cognizant of that. And, and that's why we landed at fifty. Typically, it's been in cases around the country, in cases where it is a requirement as part of an inclusionary zoning ordinance. Ours is not that. It is, is in an incentive-based one, which is why we think we have to very closely monitor this. And, and come back, as I said, with regular reports to council on what the effect of this is. Just one last thing on this, Mayor. With this, this ordinance is not for next year. I mean, it is, because we're going to be using it whenever you set the effective date. It is for next year. But it's for a long period of time. I mean, that we, to Councilmember Bajin's point, this, this needs to serve us for a long period of time. We'll be coming back and improving it constantly, as I said, on an annual basis at least. But we do have to think longer term about the impact of these. The housing bonus ordinance is a great example of this, which the city adopted just two or so years ago, the housing bonus ordinance was adopted. And I've heard some frustration at times about how effective it's been. We've got seven projects now that have been implemented based on that housing, uh, that housing bonus ordinance. And, and that will only bear more fruit. But, but the, the, and, and the incentives, um, aren't as, as significant as the ones that we're providing in this new code to all these tools that we're creating. So I just think that's something we have to, you know, we have to be careful about as a community. And, and council and the staff has to be cognizant of whether these are calibrated properly and come back to you regularly to see if they are.
Madam Mayor, I just want to, I, I think my question might have been misinterpreted or to the extent it had a point, it might have been misinterpreted. That my, the question was, you know, we're here because we're struggling with a code that's fifty years old. So some people fifty years ago decided they knew what was best and it turned out not to fit, as we learned over the course of fifty years. So the question is, does our analysis and recommendation take into account some humility about how unsure we are, things are going to be in fifty years? And are we confident saying, yes, sitting here today, I can make a prescription for fifty years?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in on that too, because what I'm hearing is that, um, it's not that there's such confidence that we're making a prescription for fifty years. The stuff, the, we're saying fifty with, I hear the director saying it's really important that we come back within the year and see whether or not it's a hindrance or a help to getting what we want. And regardless of, I mean, I would also say, like, beyond the, this affordability piece, I mean, people are going to have to come after us and update the zoning code again, right? So it just that unfortunately, the city pushed it off for too long and we're doing it now. But I, I mean, I fully anticipate with this ordinance that, you know, at some point in the future, the councils and the mayors that come after us will be picking it up again because cities will continually change.
Yeah, but that wasn't my question either. That the question is, do we feel confident enough about what's going to happen in fifty years to be willing to make that commitment now? Not what, not do we feel confident we can revisit this in the future? Because we're going to be entitled in properties for two and a half generations. So that's the question.
Well, I mean, sorry to, to Mayor, Councilmember Bajin to stay in this realm.
Uncertainty is everywhere.
Yeah. The, the, I think the most important aspect of this, for me at least, is that we are as a community intentionally saying that we haven't figured everything out to every degree when we adopt this ordinance. Unlike other cities, even now, that are adopting ordinances who say, we've figured everything out. We're adopting this ordinance and the expectation is it will be good for fifty years. We're not making that. We're not saying that. We, Planning Commission, City Council this week, we've said, we're not, we are intentionally saying, we know that this ordinance is, is, is ideal for this city in terms of how it is structured based on the physicality of this place. We know that's right. And we know the way we've organized it around incentives is the right move for us, given our position. But what we've also said is we, and very intentionally understand that, and this issue is among the highest that we were thinking of, is we're going to have to come back, and I've mentioned this several times, regularly to evaluate these incentives to see if they're effective. The fifty years, the level of affordability, the, uh, all that. We've got to keep coming back and reporting on it. And to me, that's the important decision for Boise is we don't think this is a, we've figured everything out and we're confident in what the conditions are going to be fifty years from now. We are saying we, we, it's, it's not appropriate to think that way. We, we need to think about this thing constantly being a work in progress for us, knowing that we got the basic structure right.
Madam Mayor, I've got one more kind of question here, or just maybe getting your thoughts on, on this statement. I think one of the goals is to have more housing affordability. But in addition to that, it's to have more housing affordability in different parts of towns. And I would consider, you know, maybe this is the right term, but maybe our more, our higher-priced areas of towns. We know that when there's mixed income, that's a good thing, um, in neighborhoods across the city. One of the things that I noticed with some of our affordable housing that we have close to downtown right now in the River Street area, it exists there today because there were restrictions that were put on it a really long time ago. Um, and it's a really great place for there to be affordable housing because it's so close to everything. But it's a really unlikely place that affordable housing would be built today. And I guess I'm just sort of wondering, in your conversations with other cities, if, if the length of that deed restriction and the reason to try to get it as long as possible, if, if there's any tie to knowing that parts of town are going to be outpriced in the future and making sure that there's affordable housing in those areas as long as possible? I don't know if that is part of the conversation or if I'm just thinking things out loud and...
Mayor Member, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that's a very appropriate, I mean, that's, that's a correct aspect of this. I mean, we all have to deal with various aspects of our city that are going to be changing. And the, the recommendation to establish levels of affordability that are longer versus shorter has to do with this very fact, which is you're going to have parts of your city that are going to become less and less affordable faster than other parts of your city. So it's going to be especially important that you establish longer periods of affordability. And that's why we ended at fifty.
I had, this was Councilmember Willet's question, not Bajin's question related to the state statute. This is what James is back with.
Mayor, Councilmember Willet's, uh, we've put together some excerpts here from the conditional use permit or what the statute refers to as special use permit provisions from Idaho Code, from the Local Land Use Planning Act or, uh, LUPA for short. And this is in, in hopes of, of addressing the concern about getting some more specificity in how the city looks at conditional use permits and conditions them for success. So the, the first part excerpted there is, um, it, it explains the very general grant of authority to you, that is, to the, to the city council, to, uh, define conditional uses and, and, uh, explain which ones, what uses are or are not conditionally permitted. And that gets to the concept that, that we touched on where if there's a worry that there's no conditions possible, that certainly does not belong in the allowed use table as conditionally allowed. The idea is that once it's there, the focus shifts to, well, what conditions, you know, can we, uh, uh, apply? And, and there, it's important to note that, uh, there's lots of, there's lots of types of conditions that might apply. And it's going to be, it needs to be a case-by-case decision. And you certainly have highly qualified and highly motivated Planning and Zoning Commissioners who, who understand this process, but certainly need, you know, some good and some useful language. So, but it doesn't stop there. And back to the council member's concern about, about, um, conditions mitigating. What's also loaded into your draft rewrite are, are what follows here and actually, actually even more. But LUPA lays out, and then the draft code reflects suggested types of conditions. And it goes, these go into great detail there about how municipalities might go about conditioning these uses. And it suggests the type of things that, that might apply. But again, they're, they're case-by-case and there's lots of ways to go about it, such as controlling sequence of, and timing of the development or the duration or maintenance operation. It goes into all those things. So there, there is specificity, but it's a little bit under the hood, so to speak. And I hope that gets to the council member's concern.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor, can we have that email to us as well? The, the statute?
Oh, the language?
Yeah, yeah. So we can look at it again. Thank you.
All right. Any further items, questions related? Questions that ought to be covered?
Um, Madam Mayor, if we have some general questions that haven't come up, is now the time?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do you mind? Come back up here, Tim. So one of the things that we heard, you know, we, we addressed the utility question from Idaho Power. One of the things that we heard from Intermountain Gas was the sustainability issue. And we, disallowing natural gas would essentially prohibit choice by the consumer that is required by Idaho law. Can you walk us through that?
Mayor, Councilmember Willet's, and I'll speak to it just from our perspective. I wish Steve Hubbell was still here from Public Works, because we worked very closely with Public Works on this item, back and forth quite a bit around the language related to the sustainability incentives. And, and they felt very strongly that, that this all-electric aspect of it is a very important part of the sustainability incentives. And, um, and, you know, with regard to the testimony this week regarding natural gas and, and what the implications of this ordinance are, as you know, Councilmember, we are including this requirement as part of an incentive to get additional units. It is not required of, of anyone in the city. It is only in cases where you're seeking, or you decide to take advantage of these incentives. And having seen a lot of back and forth over a period of many weeks with regard to, to the inclusion of this in, in our, in our ordinance and the implications of that, we really feel strongly that there's just a disagreement as to the city's ability to do this, you know, and what the implications are in terms of various, uh, ways you want to approach this from a legal standpoint. And we have, we have discussed this thoroughly internally and discussed it from various avenues with, uh, city attorney as well as Public Works and feel as though this is inappropriate. It's a, it's a very, as a matter of fact, Public Works said to us, I'll say this, this part of it, which, which was if we don't include this all-electric provision, then we, it, what, what are we doing? You know, what, why do it if, if we don't have that aspect of the sustainability incentive? So, so we feel strongly this is an important aspect of it and that, and we just have a disagreement over, over whether or not the city has the authority to do this. And we strongly feel we do because it's part of these incentives.
So what would happen if I live in one of these units and I want a gas stove? Then what? And the state allows it?
Right. Yeah. The, the, the time at which we're dealing with the Councilmember is the time when someone comes in for a permit. And are they, are they, uh, are they, uh, are those incentives available to them based on the permit application we're getting? And we would review that. We would ensure that they, if they're, if they get to take advantage of the incentive, that they are meeting those requirements. We would, as we would with any construction or renovation project, we would ensure that they meet those requirements in the construction all, all the way through the inspection process and on to a certificate of occupancy. And that would be the end of our involvement in this. So, uh, so that's the answer to this.
Madam Mayor. To clarify my understanding and tell me if this is wrong. Somebody builds an apartment building right now, doesn't put gas in, rents it out. The tenants can't sue the city or anybody else for the lack of availability of gas. That was a decision that the developer made. New code goes in. New code says, hey, developer, if like you did last year, you want to choose to not put natural gas in, here's some additional stuff that, you know, will help move you along. Developer makes the same choice. Unit doesn't get natural gas. Same issue, was the developer's choice, not the city's. We didn't mandate anything, we didn't require anything. But in both cases, the tenant doesn't have access to natural gas because of a decision that their developer made. And that's why it's not regulating or mandating or denying access to natural gas to residents and tenants. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilmember Bajin, I would say that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, Tim, and this could be for other staff potentially as well. I, during the conversation earlier about neighborhood association testimony time, I asked if we thought there was possible wording that could give flexibility to request additional time? I'm wondering if there has been, if there is wording that's out there that would allow us to give them that flexibility in code.
Well, there's multiple ways to do it, council member, and you all had begun to discuss this before we recessed for dinner, but a couple of things I'd say before getting into the, maybe some options. One is that we, we've thought about this this week with regard to are there certain types of cases where there'd be additional time and these kinds of things? The one thing that's a concern about that, and you all know this very well, it's hard to predict what will be a big neighborhood issue. Sometimes it's big things that you would expect, but many, many times it's not. It's a very specific small thing that means a lot to that neighborhood, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have necessarily picked up on, or it wouldn't really be related to the, the scale of the use that then translates into the zoning ordinance. So, so that was a concern, you know? How would we define that in a way that we could be clear about? When we know that it's quite unpredictable, what will be an issue that a neighborhood finds to be one that, that is fundamental to the quality of life in that neighborhood? So that, that's just something I wanted to mention that concerned us about getting too specific about what other projects might then qualify for more than 10 minutes. You know, there, there could be language that's added certainly, and, and again, upon direction of council tonight, that we could add related to the 10 minutes that somehow speaks to the policies that will be enacted by the city in, in, in association with this 10 minutes and that, that ability to speak at public hearings, which would say the city will create policies that establish the circumstances under which additional time could be provided. And, uh, and that then decision would be that, that recommendation would be made by the planning director to the chair or the, the mayor in those cases. So you could reference it in the code, but then don't get specific about what those standards are. We could establish those and say, these are the circumstances we'd expect where you could request additional time. And then we'll handle it on a case by case basis. But one other thing we talked, so that's an option. But then the other thing we did talk about, uh, to some degree, council member is, is kind of just how well things went this week. Um, and honestly, at the planning and zoning commission, I mean, we only had three minutes this week for individuals, five minutes for the neighborhoods, but what you realize in that is, hey, there's clarity to, I get this amount of time. And then council, the council and the mayor during this week, you ended up asking questions of people that, that came with things that you wanted more information about. And so it became more than three minutes or five minutes based on the deliberations of council. And it wasn't somehow encoded. It was just, that's the way we do business. It seemed to work quite well this week that, that we, that we handled it that way. And people had the certainty around how much time they had. They also had the ability to write as much as they want, as lengthy a set of recommendations as they'd like and submit that to council. And, and therefore you had this written submission that then was summarized in three or five minutes. And then council was able to ask questions and these, it just seemed to work very well. And it was just the clarity around how long you get and the ability to, to send in written comments before the hearing that just seemed to work well. And, you know, when you get into establishing, we'll make decisions on a case by case basis as to how much additional time you get, there's a little bit of, you know, you kind of get worried about it a little bit in the sense that, you know, people are having to make individual decisions, even based on policies. People might think preferential treatment, or why did they get it? We didn't, you know, I mean, it just, but if you have one standard, it just seemed to work very well this week. So there's a couple of other options here, council member.
And Madam Mayor, maybe just one follow up. First of all, that's incredibly helpful, and I really, really appreciate all the different kind of options and advice. And, you know, the way that you've been thinking about it. How, how do we determine how much time a developer and applicant gets on some of these larger, so like someone comes and they've got a, you know, a major PUD. We see something really large, like, you know, a shelter, like is there, is there a definition for?
The amount of time the. Let me check on this.
A mayor council member, Councilpro Tem Halliburton. Many of these are coming through, and I, I believe the mayor pointed out earlier in the hearing that much of it is up to the discretion of the chair. And under current code where it says that certain parties are allowed up to certain amounts of time, or no less than certain amounts of time, then, then those are the guidelines that are used. So using maximums and minimums can, can get you a sideboard or can, can get you most of the way there, leaving the rest up to the chair's discretion. But to the question of how, how it's decided, I, I think as, as Tim's talked about, some projects are big and some are small. And so just seeing how the planning and zoning commission's hearing, hearings goes, it's some are short, right? And just waiting for the, for the presentations to, to get through. And, um, for the applicant team and the neighborhood association presentations being equal, folks just need to track how much time was devoted. So chair, chair discretion covers a lot. And, and I, I think it's worked pretty well for the planning zoning commission. Haven't seen much trouble with it there.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess one follow up question there. And I want to be clear that I'm not necessarily advocating for the exact same amount of time. Because I think that there's sometimes a very detailed process that needs, the applicant needs to walk us through to actually inform us, inform us of what they're doing, which is different. But I think what you're saying is we don't necessarily have something that says this is the maximum amount of time for an applicant. We sort of decide that throughout the process and how complex it might be at the chair's discretion.
And I would say too, I mean, my experience on the planning and zoning commission, and then as on council now, is that you know in advance from staff, if it's really technical application, you know, in advance from staff, if there are going to be a lot of residents that are interested and engaged. And the staff gets a sense of what to expect time wise and then sets that expectation with both the applicant and then the neighborhood associations. And I think that this is good to give a floor. And but it does, it, it allows the opportunity for planning zoning commission design review, council leadership to determine that, you know, actually in this case, we're going to provide more.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim, I also had a question about minor subdivision. Dividing, because right now you have, you can have a private property owner that can divide their property. And now there's a, there's some nuances there. Can you walk us, yeah, actually right here. Remove of minor land divisions and requirement for new subdivisions to have a public hearing to ensure developers provide infrastructure improvements. Walk us through what that looks like in practicality when you have a private homeowner that might be on an acre and then wants to do some units. What does that look like?
Yeah, that was one question I'll ask to my staff is, is there, is there a, a property size threshold that is relevant here as, as it relates to, okay. So, um, Mayor Councilmember Willet's, the, the situation is that what we, that the issue that we're trying to get here to here is that we have cases today where people are able to record a survey in order to, to, to circumnavigate or get around the subdivision requirements the city has, which means that they'll be able to subdivide property and not make the improvements that they would otherwise be required to make. Whether it could be small things, it could be big things, but it could be, you know, you've got a little missing piece of sidewalk or something on your block in an existing neighborhood. Or it could be bigger things like you, you're supposed to build a new street or connection or a longer sidewalk that connects to another sidewalk four blocks away. So the scale of it is quite different. But this record of survey in a small subdivision case allows you to do that subdivision without installing those improvements. And, and, and that's what we're trying to get to here is that we, you have to come to the city in order to get that subdivision approved so that we can ensure those public improvements are made. I mean, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Tim.
I have a rather lengthy motion that I anticipate a lot of discussion on, but I'd like to get it out there for deliberation. I move that we approve and move to first reading Z O A two, three dash one per the staff report with the following modifications to the draft rewrite. Number one, implement the modern zoning code with an effective date of December 1, 2023. Two, modify the conditional use permit findings to include the word and. Three, modify the bike parking to increase the long-term bike parking to be calculated to require one bicycle parking space for the first bedroom and point five parking spaces for each additional bedroom. Four, include R two and R three within the neighborhood transition standards. Five, include all proposed changes identified with the April 13th PDS memo. Six, include all proposed changes identified with the June 1st PDS memo. Seven, allow class three trees in an eight feet planter strip along streets. Eight, allow class two trees under overhead power lines when sufficient height exists. Nine, provide noticing for type two applications to adjacent property owners at the approval stage. 10, increase neighborhood association testimony time to 10 minutes for the neighborhood associations that are located within the notification radius. 11, decouple the sustainability and affordability requirements within the affordability incentives. 12, create a use that will allow electric substations that will include use-specific standards that require landscaping and screening requirements in all zones. 13, include language that requires conditions of approval that require all improvements to be completed one year after first occupancy permit is issued. 14, allow all sizes of childcare slash daycare facilities allowed in the mixed use zones by right. 15, allow for a parking reduction to be obtained through conditional use permit. 16, amend onsite and offsite signs to have an eight second dwell time. 17, amend the accessory dwelling unit standards to not require any parking. Remove the requirement for owner occupancy, remove the affordability requirement. 18, reduce the length of deed restriction for affordability incentives to 20 years. And to include the following directives to staff. Prepare and bring back an ordinance on June 27th for readings and formal adoption of the approved zoning code rewrite. Bring minor amendments to the code that are needed in November of 2023. And bring the code back to the city council in one year from the effective date to evaluate the effectiveness and make appropriate amendments.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion. Everybody's got the amber alerts going.
I can kick it off if, I was waiting for Holly.
I, I'm happy to kick it off. Madam Mayor, I have, I guess, a few things to say. Um, but first I want to commend everyone who has been involved with this process from all the way in 2008 at Compass, when everyone was developing blueprints for good growth, to Boise adopting our own blueprint for good growth, being the only city in the Treasure Valley to do so after that valleywide process. And all the way through everyone who sat through planning and zoning meetings and helped resolve the conflicts between our comprehensive plan of blueprint Boise and our antiquated zoning code, all the way to today, where we now have a zoning code in front of us that reflects our comprehensive plan that we worked on over many years, such a very long time ago, which I think is really rewarding. I just want to share a couple of little stories. So I moved part-time to the North End when I was eight years old. So I spent my summers and holidays there. And we had, you know, a beautiful little single family home on a corner lot with protected sidewalks, a block from Hollywood Market, where I would go buy ice cream from Margaret during the summer. And it was a wonderful place to grow up, you know? We could walk downtown. We, I would walk downtown and have lunch with my stepmom who worked at City Hall. It was a really wonderful place. Fast forward to when I was in college, I lived within three blocks of that house in a duplex. I lived maybe five more blocks up the street. Later in college, I lived in a duplex behind the co-op. My husband and I bought our first home together on Fourth and Pueblo, a single family home. And it really afforded us that opportunity to live in the same neighborhood with a variety of needs at a variety of times in our life. So I really look back at that experience and I, I mean, I have a nostalgia, but really that's what we're trying to get at here. We're trying to get at those neighborhoods that provide a variety of living opportunities for a variety of times in our lives so that we don't have to move clear across town, so that we don't have to drive all the time. We can walk, we can bike, we can bike to college, we can take public transit when needed. And it really builds those more vibrant neighborhoods where hopefully someday we all can, you know, walk to our corner store and buy ice cream from the nice older lady who owns it. Rest in peace, Margaret. Um, and so I think that's one of the really wonderful and rewarding things about this zoning code is that it really seeks to build those neighborhoods that have connectivity, that have opportunity all over the city. And I want to thank everyone who came to share with us the love and concern that they have with the city. We heard from a lot of people and a majority of those folks were in favor of this zoning code, which I think was unexpected. Um, when you're going into these things, you just never really know in advance how that's going to go. We heard from people who had constructive concerns. And we, I think, made some positive changes to reflect a lot of what we heard. We heard from folks who just are absolutely opposed, but that was very few people. And so I think that we really, we created something over a number of years with a lot of community input, with a lot of work from our staff and volunteers on the citizen advisory committee, volunteers who helped develop blueprint Boise. And I think it got us to where we are today, where we have a zoning code that reflects years of work, a lot of citizen involvement. And a lot of citizen involvement and community input that frankly has made it better and more reflective of our values. So, um, it was a lot of work, but I feel like we got there. And I'm looking forward to seeing what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Ben Merritt, uh, Councilmember Bajin seconded the motion. Why don't you, yeah, why don't you go ahead and go for it?
I like Jimmy so much. And I, I voted him to Councilpro Tem, so go ahead, sir.
Oh, I think I've, I've got, uh, like lots of things that I want to give, um, some statements that I want to say as well. Through some of the questioning, I feel fine with the 10 minutes for neighborhood association time, because I do think that there's the ability for discretion to be given in larger applications that could be granted. You know, both from the chair and through questioning. I think guaranteeing 10 minutes is, is great. I think that's a long time for a presentation and, and you, and people should be able to put a good presentation together that way. And there may be some really, really large applications that are out there in the future that we'll need to potentially look at and have some discretion there. And I think that there's enough room to do that. I have the, uh, ability and willingness to support the motion the way that it is right now. I also have an appetite for the deed restrictions remaining at 50 years. And here's the reason why. Um, I think a lot about change, um, that we have in our city. And one of the things I really appreciate that Councilmember Bejent brought up is that we really have no idea what fifty years from now are going to look like. And I was thinking about this billboard conversation and the last code, there wasn't electronic billboards, um, even probably twenty or thirty years ago. We couldn't have taken public testimony over Zoom five years ago. There wasn't internet twenty years or thirty years ago for us to be doing so much of the engagement we've done. There's so much that can change and I absolutely understand that aspect and I think it's hard to predict in fifty years is a lot, a long time. But I think that that last point that I brought up with Director Keen is kind of where my mind's at is twenty years ago, when I, uh, was starting the Boise Bicycle Project and going to college, I fell in love with Boise because I lived in an A D U in the North End off Tenth and Pueblo. And it was that proximity to that downtown area that like changed my life and sent me on a really, really like new direction of community involvement, community engagement, support of all these local different business, all these different local businesses, involvement with nonprofits across the board, coming to city council meetings. And that area is just, it's simply not affordable today. Um, and the best thing that could happen for some of our lower income and most vulnerable vulnerable populations is that they would have places to stay in some of our highest property value neighborhoods. I think of the East End, I think of the North End, I think of the River Street area, I think of the West Boise area, I think of areas where it would be really, really great for more mixed on income levels to be years and years and years and decades from now. Um, and those are the areas that are going to continue to grow in price and they're probably going to be close to the downtown area. And the downtown area has the best opportunity to serve these folks' needs, whether it's, um, you know, bus routes, being able to walk to a grocery store, to a library, um, to all, to a hospital, um, all these different facilities. And so I do think that there are some advantages to keeping it at fifty years. Um, again, I'm, I'm not going to throw the the baby out with the bathwater on this one. I think that it's a great motion. I think that it's a great code. Um, with the twenty years, I believe is what you proposed, Council President Woodding. Um, but I don't know if there's appetite for, from other council members for fifty.
Madam Mayor, um, well, this is an exciting thing. Uh, it's so much in the making, both well, just from everybody, from so many people in the community. I want to join the chorus of people thanking the city staff who've been working on this so hard. Thanking the advisory committee and thanking all of the members of the public who came both to support it and to voice their opposition or their concerns. So many examples of ways that those words of encouragement or proposals to be better or criticisms and concerns have been adopted and incorporated into this draft. Not all of them. Um, I personally have a big pencil and I think I could make it a lot better, but I'm humble about, uh, the fact that everybody feels that way and everybody has a slightly different perspective. The remarkable thing about this draft is that it really does reflect the themes and the spirit of what everyone asked for. And that's why I want to circle back around to thanking the staff and the people who leaned in and worked on this. That is much more of an undertaking than sitting down and writing six hundred pages. It's absolutely monumental. It's incredibly huge and incredibly meaningful work and this will be the certainly the greatest privilege I ever have to be able to vote in favor of this. Um, on some of the more specific things. Uh, you know, I don't feel fifty years is the right number. It's just too long. Um, and each year that goes by, we add to it so that ten years from now, we'll be looking at sixty years. Um, it's just not the right number. Twenty years is one generation. Twenty years matches with lots of federal structures like HUD financing and things like that. And twenty years reflects some humility that we know what would be better, but we don't know what's perfect. I'm so proud of this code and I'm so proud of the people in Boise, that hundreds, if not thousands of people in Boise who gave their time and their brainpower and their energy to making it as good as it is. We're not done. We'll be revisiting it. We'll be coming back. We'll be circling around. We'll be making it even better. But I'm proud of of what we've done here today and I'm excited to vote for it.
Madam Mayor. Um, I do want to thank the the public for coming out, um, and testifying. I think that it was really informative, um, to hear all of your perspectives. I really want to thank the staff. I will admit that I, after last night, I came in with a lot of questions and a lot of issues that I wanted to make sure we addressed and I was very impressed that today it was already addressed by the staff by the time we got here this evening. So I thank you for that. Um, with respect to the motion, I too, um, um, have support of the motion, but I would like to point out that I would prefer that it be a fifty-year deed restriction. I do look back on the housing policies that have been in place, um, across the country since the nineteen thirties and think about the lack of intergenerational wealth that is, um, plaguing many sectors of our society. And the ability to have affordable housing is not an issue that is going to go away anytime soon, even within the next fifty years. And so I personally believe that we should, um, uh, have this as a much longer term to ensure that this housing remains, um, for as long as possible. Because that, um, ability to, uh, claw back what has happened over the last, now basically a hundred years um, is is something that we're as a society not going to be able to undo within a twenty-year timeframe. Um, but I'm not similarly going to throw this whole thing out. It's been a tremendous amount of effort and many years by many individuals, um, working together to pull this together. So I will not, um, deny my vote of this, um, in light of that. But I did want to put on the record that I personally believe it should be longer.
So I have a lot of thoughts. Um, first of all, I just want to thank, um, the staff and also, um, everyone who came out. This has been an incredible process with a lot of people involved. Um, and and I want to address some things about communications because I think sometimes we live in a zero-sum game. Um, and we can do a lot of communication and still have people feel like they don't know everything that's going on. And that's always a challenge and, um, I think we always learn when we go through these processes about how we can do better, do more. Um, and I think that some of the changes today reflect that about how we can communicate better. Um, from a, from a personal, um, perspective, you know, uh, President Woodings talked about her experience and I think, you know, mine. You know, a lot of you know my personal experience, some of you don't, but, um, I grew up in affordable housing. Um, I like, my husband grew up in a single white trailer. I grew up in a double white and, um, I had a wonderful, wonderful childhood and, um, we were able to move to Boise or to the Treasure Valley. Um, and buy a house in our early twenties and we found the commute arduous, you know, we needed to get closer into Boise and the closest that we could afford was West Boise. Um, I have a daughter now who, you know, was trying to buy our first house, just got it. I have a lot of empathy for what's going on. We need lots of different kinds of housing. Choice is fundamental to the American way. You have to have choices. We shouldn't have one thing for everybody. We should give, we should give citizens every kind of choice possible. So when I looked at this code, there were a couple of things that I looked at philosophically. I looked at, um, are we reducing red tape? Are we allowing the market to innovate? So are we deregulating things so that the market and those who do this work can bring their best and brightest ideas? And then are we helping private property owners to invest in Boise families? And when I look at this overall, the answer is yes to all of those. Are there things that I want changed and I want to put on the record? You bet. Um, I, I really want more time for neighborhoods. Um, I don't want neighborhood associations to believe that or feel that their voices don't matter. And I think we need to do better there. I don't like forced density for four-story buildings, um, in certain zones. I really want to evaluate that. Uh, I think it's really important that we have opposition parties when we look at this in a year and evaluate it. And I think the cup language could be straight, could be strengthened. I don't think it's appropriate to do that right now on the dais. So as I look at this in overall, there's a lot of things that I want to change that have been addressed. It's not everything. I think if you look at my colleagues, every one of us has a list that we would, we would change. But overall, I think it gets us down the road. It gets us in a better spot than we were yesterday. And it gives us the opportunity to build on something that we need today more than ever. And, um, I'm excited to see how Boiseans can innovate with this new zone and to make sure that we are innovating in Boise because I don't want urban sprawl and other parts of this, uh, the valley because we're too tight here in Boise. So we need to look at that. So I'm going to be casting a yes vote. Um, knowing that I'm going to dig in and ensure that this code gets better and better.
Mayor. Um, I feel like, uh, we're at the end of a really long relay and, uh, in the last three yards, someone handed me a baton to cast a vote on this. Um, uh, there's a lot of technical stuff we could get into, but I I just want to talk about my personal experience. Um, ooh, my son's been here with me all week. Um, and, uh, before he was born, I really wanted to own a house so that we had a stable place for him to grow up in. And I was in undergrad and I was a bank teller and we were able to afford one and we got into one. And I thought I was being very industrious and I flipped that house to pay for my first year of of graduate school and I thought that was the best financial decision I ever made. Um, I sold that house in twenty sixteen. And that house now has half a million dollars of equity in it and there's a lot of people that are in my situation that maybe never even owned a home that feel like they missed a lottery ticket because they weren't in the market in the last five years. And we need to do something about it. And, um, zoning code does that. And uh, the process and what's come out of this, pardon my language, it's just pretty damn good. And I'm proud of the effort that's gone into it and I'm proud to be a part of it. And I'm proud to be casting a vote in favor of the motion. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, you know, I think I added my piece and I'm fine with that. Uh, I want to start by, you just got me really off guard. Um, I want to start by saying, uh, how proud I am of all the council members who are up here. Um, this isn't an easy decision. We heard from so many incredible people in our community. And Council President Woodings, you've been involved in this conversations before that I was on council. Um, and I really appreciate you, um, making the motion tonight and, um, and taking that bold step, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, you were on council when this started, you're the mayor now. And it's such a huge moment. This is, this is the biggest vote many of us, I think, will ever take. Um, but it doesn't seem like the hardest vote in the world because I think that the input that we've heard from the community, um, the expertise that we've had from staff. This is the right thing to do. Like this is, this is taking a, a code that wasn't working in our community and making it significantly better. And so I just want to say that I really am, I'm proud of each one of you and I'm happy to be on your team and, um, I didn't get fifty years on that particular thing and that's okay. Uh, there's so many other amazing things in here and twenty years is great. Um, I want to thank all of the folks on our staff, um, who engaged in this, you know, more than anyone. Um, sometimes in environments that, uh, were a little bit tough, um, with folks that were scared, frustrated, mad. Um, and you handle that with so much grace and so much professionalism. And I think one of the things I admire most about people and Councilmember Bejent said this to me one time. Um, is people who have the ability to change their mind about something. And Director Keen brought this, engaging with the public, we were trying to do something really, really good for our community. We're taking a lot of really, really good steps, but we didn't have it right. And we heard from the community about that. And you all listened, um, you took that feedback gracefully. And you created something really, really good. Um, and I, and I can't, you know, voice my appreciation to you all, all enough. Uh, Tim, you got this across the finish line. I want to say, uh, congratulations, um, to you. Uh, I've really enjoyed watching you throughout this process. I forgot to say that this might take a little bit. Um, uh, Tim, I've watched you through this process and the way that you bring your experience and expertise to the table and share it with other people while also humbly taking all of their input. Um, treating each and every one of their questions with curiosity and real answers. And and sometimes I, you know, I think learning a little bit more about their point of view and making those adjustments. I, I've really enjoyed watching you throughout this entire process and the city's lucky to have you. Um, so thanks, Tim. And there's some folks from the advisory committee, uh, that are here tonight. I'm a little jealous of all of you and some of the time that you got to spend together. Having some of these really, really, uh, interesting discussions. I didn't know about the Pokemon Go thing. That might have been fun. Um, but thinking in a big group of amazing people who care about the city, um, how we can make it better and what you want the community to look like, I'm jealous. Uh, I think it's so cool that you got to be part of that. And I hope as we go through this review process, um, going forward that you all stay involved and and become part of this as well. Um, and I, and I want to make sure that I thank, uh, every single person who who testified. The second to last, maybe third to last person at the end of I don't know how many hours of public testimony of all the input offered a suggestion that was incorporated in city code that might exist for the next fifty, sixty years. Um, an innovative idea, I think it was Ethan, I mean, innovative, innovative idea about a conditional use permit um, for exploring reduced parking. I think it's incredible that somebody can bring an idea like that to the table. Um, our staff can digest it to see if it's actually possible. And a group of city council members can have the guts to actually adopt something that they think is going to, um, improve the city. There's this word that got thrown around throughout this entire time, perfect. Um, we don't think that this plan is perfect. There is no such thing as a perfect plan. Perfect is 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 not the word. It doesn't exist. Um, anything that was even perfect today would not be perfect tomorrow. Um, and that was outlined with the new technology that might, we have no idea what the future will bring. And letting perfect be the enemy of a really, really good plan going forward would would be an absolute disaster. So I don't know that perfect is the goal, but moving towards perfect, always trying to make it more perfect, uh, is that goal. There were some people who asked, um, we need to have proof that this will work. And there's some things that we truly don't know. And there's probably some things in here that we might get wrong. Um, but that's how innovation goes, right? Um, you try something new, you try something bold. If it works, great, you keep moving on it. If it doesn't work, you do something different, you make adjustments and you move on. But there are things in here, um, that we know will work. And, you know, this is where I'll kind of share my personal story and then, and then I'll, then I'll end it. Um, I grew up in Northwest Boise. A lot of people know that. Um, I grew up in a house that my grandpa built in the fifties, sold it to my parents. And it was a great neighborhood. I mean, I rode my bike all over the place. Um, it was right next to a dairy farm. I played in the canal. Um, there was basically the drainage from the dairy farm. This is not the kind of canal that you should be playing. There's a lot of canals that you shouldn't be playing in, but like this is not the kind of water that you would want to be playing in. But that was, that was my playground and my when we'd go to the grocery store, we would have to drive five miles. When my dad drove to Hewlett Packard, he would have to drive eight miles. When my mom drove to the elementary school, uh, that she taught at, she would have to drive six miles. There wasn't a park anywhere close. Um, we were riding my bike around on, you know, just these country roads. That same neighborhood today, um, that same lot that I lived on, um, now has four houses on it. It has more people who live in that area. There's the Optimus football field parks that's right across the street. There's a mountain bike park right up the road. There's a bike lane that goes down to the grocery store. Um, there's an elementary school right across the street. There's hundreds of kids in that neighborhood, uh, riding their bicycles around with each other. When there's a lot of change, there is, there is loss. And I think that there will be some loss in this plan, but there's also loss in not doing anything. And you look at the loss that our, our community is experiencing right now and it's real. Um, but you have to weigh that on what you're going to get. And there are so many great things that this plan, I think, will do. Um, might be a little bit louder. There might be a couple more cars driving on the road every once in a while, but you won't have to drive every single, every single trip. The balances of the challenges and the changes that we're faced with what we get out of it is so good and so great. Um, I really do feel lucky to to be on this council right now with all of you and part of this group. Um, there was one person who sort of challenged us and and thought that we were making decisions based off ourselves. I want you to know that the, the decisions that I'm making tonight are one hundred percent. So if I want you to know that the decisions that I'm making tonight are 100% based off of the kids that are in our community, the thousands of kids that I've got to work with, my niece, my nephew, Colin's kids, Patrick's kids, Holly's kids. The kids that are going to change the future of Boise forever. They deserve to live here. They deserve a code that meets their needs. And I'm really proud of our staff for creating that code. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one suggestion, this has obviously been a massive effort. There's a ton of documents online. I think it would be really helpful to have all of the amendments and the new code based on the memos well in advance of any city council decision on it on the webpage, so that people can see the entire document before it goes to first reading.
Yeah, I did, Madam Mayor. So the ordinance will be posted on the website the Friday before the June 27th meeting. Is that correct? Can I get like a? And then we will also see it come back to us either at work session or in special business before it's actually read for the first time, to ensure that all of the changes that we proposed are in there and made.
I think that's important because there's a lot of documentation and the public needs to see what we did and where we did it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to add a couple, a couple extra little notes here. Number one is I want to address the, the deed restriction for affordability. I think that our best case scenario, and this also goes back to the affordability or sustainability standards. If this is wildly successful and we see a bunch of people using this in the first year, I think that going back to those standards and making them less permissive and a little bit more prescriptive would be totally appropriate. I hope that that happens and I hope that we have that option. But I think that starting out a little bit more permissive is our best day to try to get some of this stuff rolling quickly. And so that's what I would anticipate is that if it works amazing and there's a ton of people taking advantage, that we ratchet it down a little bit and get a little bit more out of it. And I think we've talked so much about housing, which is great. I think one of the things that we've lost in our housing discussion is that this, this also protects the foothills. It protects our farmland. It lets us have amazing farmers coming and bringing us their produce every single week at the farmer's market. And it does that with less transportation and fewer emissions. It preserves our river. And these are, you know, really the things that are special to us, along with having a wonderful place for everyone to enjoy Boise in the way that they want to. So that's all I got. Thank you.
I'd like to say a couple of things. I won't be voting, but I want to start with thanks and truly share my gratitude with and for the members of this community that for years have helped and even before us, helped shape who we are today. And then importantly, as the council president referenced, helped get us to this point today. And whether it was, you know, back in the day when volunteers and neighbors and others were coming together and envisioning what a city would look like in that blueprint exercise, or the hundreds of Boiseans that participated in the comprehensive plan and the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, the council at the time that took that and then accepted it. And then each and every one of you who are here, who have been through these halls or have been online to help shape this ordinance that we have tonight. And I also want to thank staff. I think the council president, Pro Tem, put it so well, that you have done and helped us do what we sought to do, which is create a plan for our community that we love deeply, that will carry us into the future, but in a Boise way. That's unique to, as you referenced, the, the landscape in which we're blessed to find ourselves, that embraces our history of coming up with innovative gritty ways to do the right thing without necessarily copying another place. And you helped us do that. The Citizens Advisory Committee that spent hours and hours and hours the last three years, I'm hearing from so many people, learning together and then hearing from so many people and debating issues that we even heard about last night, that brought us these, this ordinance. Each and this council that will be voting unanimously. And I think that that is so important because, and I appreciate it. And I didn't mean to get like this, but this shows us, as Boiseans always do, where it matters most, we find what we value and we work from here. And this council did that through countless hours of testimony this week, from many, many questions over the last year, from communications and conversations with residents in all neighborhoods of the city, with neighborhood associations that I too deeply value and recognize that we all care most. And what's most valuable is that we take care of our families and we have homes. Because a home at its core is a fundamental foundation for a thriving city. Because to have a thriving city, you've got to have opportunities for people and families that can thrive. And we're so lucky here to have a place where you can have neighborhoods like our grandparents had and where we can work now to make sure that our grandkids have neighborhoods like their great grandparents will have had. And that is what will create a thriving city. And it has been so incredible to now see a whole generation of young professionals in their twenties and thirties that are total geeks about planning. But it's not about planning because it's about people. It is planning, but fundamentally it's about people. And that's what this community and this city has always been about. And while there are many things that we're fearful that we will lose as we grow, the thing that we won't lose as we change is that fundamental connection that we have to each other and to this place we call home. And this ordinance and the process that we've gone through helps us capture that and bottle it up and present it to our kids for theirs. We heard from young professionals that some of whom I kind of remember now when I think about it, when they were in grade school, that have come home, that are building their lives here. They want to be able to buy a home. But until then, they need to be able to rent a home. And they need to be able to afford that rent so that they can do what we were all blessed enough to do, and that's build a life. We've heard from retirees, I think it was Lorinda, Rendi, who said that the last code passed before, passed before she was born and now she's, her words, not mine, a senior citizen. And it's time. And I found myself thinking as, you know, I listened to, I think it was Judith, maybe Judith Ellis, Judy Ellis, the first woman who spoke yesterday, also a retired woman, talking about the experience that she wants her grandkids to have when they grow up here. And that, that really, even though it has seemed, so there's a generational divide in the comments, it really isn't. Because throughout the testimony we've received, it's people of all ages that care about the same thing. And that is the fundamental importance of family and home. And I kept finding myself thinking about my own block that I'm so lucky to live on now. And I kept thinking about Fiona, who some of you were at my State of the City and she came, she's three. We have 15 children on our block. And next to me, there's a cottage court on one side. On the other side, there's a house that I'm pretty sure is renting out a whole bunch of rooms. Across the street from me is a triplex. Diagonal, there's two single-family homes, then a tiny home. Then there's a house with about five units in it. And then there's a house that's probably $2 million. But all of us know each other. We all have that opportunity to engage with seniors, little bitty kiddos, everybody in between. And the kids like Fiona can cross the street, offer a cup, offer a cookie, ask for some ice cream, see if she can play in the yard. And that is what neighborhoods all around the city were before the last code. And they can be again, as we create space for the people that call this place home today and into the future. You know, my, I, I keep thinking about Mr. Bay House, Bay Horse, I can't quite remember, and the garages. There are going to be things from this, this week that I remember, the geese, the garages, the meditation, a couple of different things. But when I was born, my parents lived above a garage and, and I guess, you know, now it's called an ADU. In a tiny ADU above a garage. When I was a toddler, we lived in an apartment complex and surrounded by other families that were doing the same. You know, when I was born, my dad was in grad school. My mom had a couple of jobs. I'm the oldest of four. And when they finally bought a house, they were so excited to buy a house. But it took a lot of years to save money. And they rented and cared for the four of us, just as any other parent would, before they bought. And when Scott and I moved here for graduate school out of college, you know, we did the same thing. I was pregnant with Madeline. We were renting down by On Perk Center and we scraped and scraped and we bought our home. And we all want our kids to be able to do that in the same way. Because once we could do that, we were able to start building the other things that create stability. And we knew that our kids would have that, just as we had had after our parents worked so hard to do it. Employers know that homes matter. Each and every one of us knows that homes matter, no matter the size, type, as you said. That we need all the different types of homes in this place for all the different types of people, all the different types of ages. And we've got to take care of people. And what we've seen, I'd say, in this decades-long process, but ultimately in this vote, is that Boiseans won't turn their backs on people. And that's the mistake other places have made. And we've shown time and time again that we won't. And so, you know, as we started this week, I knew this was a really important thing. It's one of many tools, but it is singularly probably the most impactful tool that this council, who has prioritized homes for people, despite all of the challenges in the last three years, this council has worked to ensure that we have homes for people in the city. This is truly the most impactful tool and that we've been able to add to the toolbox. And I thank each and every one of you for your support, your commitment to our residents and our neighborhoods and everybody that had a hand in it. Because this is a really special day for, for all of us, but importantly, for our kids and grandkids and the neighborhoods and the people that make this place the city that it is. Thank you.
And Clerk, will you call the roll? Annie Keith.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve CPA 23-1 per the staff report, including the proposed changes contained in the April 13th and June 1st PDS staff memos.
Second.
Clerk. Annie Keith.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And with that, Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.